Good evening, everyone. This is the Towne Monroe Planning Board Meeting. Today's date is August 8th. We are starting at 7:00. And it is 4:00 after 7:00. Our new time for these meetings, for the regular meeting and the workshop meeting, will be 7:00. Let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
All right. All right. So, the fire exits are at the front entrance that we all come through and through the side of it down the hallway. And then one is well behind me. My understanding is that there's a town board meeting going on as well behind me, to the extent anyone is watching this and planning to attend. Are we not live streaming, are we?
No.
No, so no one's watching. Hopefully, they'll just go around. But yeah, it's behind me. You know, I think we decided on the 7:00 meeting time, the last meeting, right?
Yes.
Word was here, right?
Yes.
Good. Because I was...
Word's pulling in, I saw.
Oh, good. I hate that if we forgot to tell him, but I thought he was here.
He may be having trouble finding a parking space.
It could be. Yeah, it's a little busy out there. All right. So, first up on our agenda is Mi'kmaq-ysro'au. Do we have anyone from ... I know we do. I see him back there. Great. Isaac, put your appearance on for the record, please.
Isaac Walter, the project manager.
Okay. All right, Isaac. This is the Mi'kmaq-ysro'au Site Plan Amendment. And I have up on this screen the last version of the resolution of approval that I had, which I think is correct. Mike, this is the August 4th version. That's the last one, right?
I'm not sure when you printed it.
Yeah, I saw it last Friday.
That sounds right. That's last Friday.
I think it is. Okay. Is that in the packets? Yes. Okay, good. Oh, it's attached. Got it. Okay, we're so organized, I didn't even know. All right, good. Perfect. Maureen, thank you. All right.
Did it top to bottom this week.
Great. All right. So, we've all got that. All right. And then in our packet also, we have the Mark's most recent comment letter, as well as the letter from Sheri Tora, Inc., which I guess is the neighboring property. This was the letter where you requested from your neighboring, from your neighbor, authorizing the owner of this property, Marion Goldberg, to plant trees and shrubs on the property. So, and Mark, did you get a copy of that? I know the check came in.
Yes, I did.
Okay, great. All right, so maybe we turn to Mark's comment letter.
One is really just introductory about the history. Two, just reminds us and reminds the applicant that we will continue to wait for the overall school master plan. Three, there are a set of revision plans prepared. I had the opportunity to look at them on the computer, revision set nine. So, they've addressed some of the comments, but my suggestion is, is that you adopt, as Mike always includes it in his resolutions, conditioned on my comments. They will be dated tonight. And under four, I've got the five items the board's been speaking about, which, one, the sewer note, which in fact is on revision nine already. The right turn restriction for egress from the site's northeast curb cut, Forest Avenue, which is on the site plan. The highway superintendent would just have to write off on the specific sign before installation. That's not a big deal. They have, they tried to meet your requirement for the plannings. The plan does not match what we talked about, which is a double row of junipers and arborvitae's, the plantings being 10 foot on center and 6 feet between the rows. So, that double staggered row has to be corrected on the plan.
What'd they do?
They have a single row.
Okay.
So, I quit after I saw a single row. I figured they had to fix it anyway.
Yeah, sure.
But no big deal. The other item the board had asked at the last meeting was that you include, or they include, a note indicating that the rooftop playground fence would blend with the parapet wall in the building. So, it'd be a complementary color or match. So, I'll make sure that note is on the plans. Last but not least, the final set that John submits for stamp of approval should have the approval boxes where we historically get those, so that you can see them on the folded plans, with the project number on the approval box, so that they are properly filed and easy to file in the future if they get separated from the official files. So, those are extremely simple corrections, two of which, I'll say two and a half, have been made. I'm sure John Atzel can take care of that, so my recommendation is that you include Mike's comment four by reference in Mike's resolution, and we can make sure those are correct when they come in for stamp of approval. But they've complied with everything else that we've asked for.
Okay. So, that means that the resolution that we're looking at now, while it has the dates of the last revision date is June 16th, it won't have ... will we have the opportunity to be able to update that, so that it matches the revision date that you get?
What will happen is Mark's, Mark's letter will give the new revision dates after his review.
Yeah. What'll happen is you'll adopt a resolution relative to the last plans you received.
Yeah, which is June 16th.
And they have to correct those plans. So, they will get a new revision date, and my memo to the chairperson will say revision 10 dated whatever complies with all the conditions of approval.
Can't, can't then we, in the drawing section, say that? As, as part of the form?
Well, we won't know what date they're gonna have on them.
I know. But as part of the form, can't we have, after the list of drawings, a statement that says further plans will be submitted by the applicant, which, the date of such plans will be reflected in Mark's comment letter? Something like that?
Sure. In condition number one, it envisions it, but I'll put a footnote by last revision date that plan set will be updated as reported in Mark's letter.
Anytime your approval will be a conditional approval, they'll have a revision date. I want to have a new date on it, just so we can tell the difference.
Yeah, I'm just saying, under, under the drawing section where it's got the list, can't, can't we just have at the end, see Mark's comment letter dated such and such for the last revision date of the plans?
Sure. That makes sense.
Probably easier, I can just put a footnote at last revision date, so it'll be on the bottom. Or I can put it in a paragraph below, whichever.
Yeah, whichever. As long as it sort of tracks to the drawing section.
Yep.
That would be great.
I'll add that.
Okay, cool. All right. So, that seems pretty, pretty limited, your comments. And, and you're not gonna update this note? This comment? This is it?
This is it.
Okay.
This, Mike references my comment sheet from tonight in the resolution, so it will carry forward.
Okay.
I only have two things. Condition 11 reports an amount for an inspection fee. And I don't know if we have that amount yet, or whether Mark's prepared to give it. The other one is 13. I will verbatim add traffic movements at the northeast curb cut, the Forest Avenue shall be limited to right turn out only.
Wait, I'm sorry, where was that?
Condition 13 on the bottom of, I guess, page six. I wasn't sure what intersection it was that had that limited, but I see it in Mark's memo, so I'll include it.
Okay. Condition 13 is the age of students.
I've got 14.
I must be looking.
Idol 14.
Yeah, let's make sure we're all on the right one.
Okay, hang on. Thank you.
Okay. What's the date of yours?
Well, mine was August 2nd, but those are print dates.
Oh, okay.
So, it's condition 14.
All right, you're sure we have the right one?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I'm looking at it now. The other condition is 11.
Well, a fee and the amount of blanks shall be posted before the plans are signed to cover review and construction inspections. So, Mark, you would have to answer that.
Yeah, I'll have to speak with Ryan Nugent to verify what formula they're using.
Okay.
So, you may want to ...
A fee and an amount to be determined.
By the town board? Is it actually by resolution, the town board, or is it just something, I mean?
Well, it's an inspection fee, so it's not necessarily binding, but we'll say it's determined by the town attorney or town board, or the recommendation of the engineer.
Make it, make it town attorney or town board. That way, we don't have to go through the whole town board process if we don't have to. Okay, and 12, the date of the narrative has to go in?
Yeah.
Let me see if I can ... Is this the one where I gave you a bunch of revisions last time? Isn't this the one?
This one, I think, was, I don't think there's been any revisions last week.
I had a bunch of markups I sent to Mike several weeks ago.
Does anyone remember at last, last, last week's meeting, I had gone through a resolution and had a bunch of revisions? Was it this one?
I have mine from August 1st.
Yeah, I think it was. I don't know what else it would've been. Including like, I don't know if it was this one.
I had my notes from that meeting, where we added sewer force made in condition number four.
Uh huh.
What was in condition number four. We, we took the language from what was then condition 10 that had to do with the inspection fees and put it in condition number six.
Yeah.
So, I made those changes.
Yeah, so I think you, yeah, so, okay, so we don't have that revision, do we?
Yeah, it's in this one.
That's this. Okay, so, the narrative date was one of the revisions?
I don't know how I missed that one, but it's in there now. I just grabbed it.
And then it being attached, is it attached? And attached to the resolution?
No, I will attach it.
Good. Yep, yep, yep. Just get the date in there now. I think probably because you were waiting for someone to tell you what the date of that was.
Yep. Yeah, it would be helpful if I, if you could send that to me as a PDF.
Okay.
The most recent narrative with the date on it, and then I'll combine this resolution with that PDF. The same thing for the, the severance decision that we'll need to attach as well.
Okay. I believe ... I believe it's a narrative dated February 7th, 2017, modified on March 6th, 2017. I'm gonna forward this to you. Does that sound about right to you, Isaac?
What?
Yeah. The narrative that I have here is February 7th, 2017, modified March 6th, 2017.
Makes sense.
Just, well, you're guessing. Just write that down and confirm that for me. I'm gonna, I'm going to forward this to Mike, and I'm gonna copy you, and you're gonna confirm. I believe this is it, though. I don't have one since March. Okay, and, all right, Isaac, are you Isaac 5297? Okay. All right. Actually, in that email, I say, "Is this the most recent version?" And you respond, "Yes." So, I think it is. Okay. All right. Did anyone have any changes to the resolution in its current form? The brown color.
Did we have an age for number 13?
The age of the students attending school shall not exceed blank years. So, Isaac, what it says, let me just get it up for you. If I could figure this out, hold on. Here we go. Oh, that's a comment letter. Shoot, hold on. I've got it here somewhere. I think it's this one. Okay. Anyone see my mouse? No? There we go. Got it. 14, right? There we go. The age of the students attending school shall not exceed blank years without amended approval from the planning board.
I will get it to the mic.
We, we need to, we need to know.
I think you mentioned it the other night. I, I don't have it written down, but I thought you did. No, maybe you said the same thing. Did you get back?
Yeah, no, I think you were supposed to get back to us.
And do we want the age or the grade?
More so the grade, right? What happened? Well, yes. And that's in Mark's comment letter. The master plan was in the comment letter. But, now, so Isaac, what you submitted to me was that, I haven't read it yet. Did you submit to me what you were hoping was the master plan?
No. I was submitting the easement.
Ah, okay. So, we still haven't gotten that. So, the ages, my understanding was, let's think about this. So, the young girls from the trailers were gonna go over ...
To the mikfa.
To the Mi'kmaq. And their ages are what, nursery and kindergarten?
Nursery kindergarten, mostly, yeah.
Okay. But, okay, and so that happens until Glenwood 2 is built, right? The second Glenwood building. Then they're gonna go there. Then the boys, the overflow of the boys that are in the trailers are gonna go. So, how old would those, are they gonna be, the young boys again?
Also, nursery kindergarten.
Right. So, really, the Mi'kmaq should be probably very young, which was our point, because the playground is gonna be designed for the younger kids, so they can't climb over the wall.
And also, we need to, they need to leave at latest 3:15.
Right.
So, only nursery kindergarten is leaving at that time.
So, would it be fair to say probably nursery kindergarten? Or, I think we can probably go by grade, don't you think?
Yeah.
Grade might be better than age.
I don't know, how do you structure your grades?
Yeah, how do you structure your grades? Do you do nursery, kindergarten first, second? How do you do that?
Let me get back to Mike tomorrow morning, because I want to make sure what I answered.
Well, here's the thing. If you want us to vote on this tonight, I kind of need to know, only because if you came back to Mike and said, "Well, it's up to sixth grade," well, now you're coming back, so we have to discuss it.
Okay, so let me check what I, what we write in the ...
Fair enough.
Yeah, I don't know what their age, what we consider kindergarten.
Yeah. So, you might want to just get some feedback on that.
Okay, give me a minute.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else in here? Any blanks? So, it didn't seem ... Mike, you got your, you've got your language for 14?
14 was ...
Your traffic movement, right turn.
Yes, yeah.
I have a question on 15. Earlier, we had said that John Turner, the highway department, was gonna check on the sign, so it, but then also has to make sure it complies with the town code, the sign.
Isn't that, is that 15 a different?
No, the sign is traffic issue, so that'll be just John.
All right.
Right.
So, 15, do we need 15?
And it's in Mark's comment letter, let's see.
The signs.
Or is this a different sign that we're talking about? Is this like the sign saying this is the school?
I don't really know what sign it was, but ... You may want to take 15 and, and remove the reference to signs and just indicate that the design of the rooftop playground must comply with the ...
I think we have another location.
If I recall correctly, though, I thought we did say with the sign, we wanted it, like we had it at Larkin, it's going to have some English saying, you know, what it is.
Maybe it's the, it's the sign, not the traffic sign, but the actual facility sign.
Facility sign. So, maybe we should note it as a facility sign.
Yeah, that's probably what it is. You're right, Maureen.
I think it's the facility sign, and I think we want to, you know, they can put their Yiddish on there, but we want some English that was visible and actually not subselling.
For emergency services.
Right. With, with the name of what it is.
Okay, that's probably what that was from.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
So, I'll add, "This approval is not intended to constitute an approval of the facility sign shown on the plans, which must comply with code entered to be approved by the building inspector, and that add lettering must also be in English."
But the sign must include English translation of the facility name and address? I guess usually names.
Yeah, facility name and address.
Name and address. Yeah. But that's not, we don't have plans for the sign.
No, but this will make it clear that it's required.
Yeah, okay. And that's the point.
Ben's something to work from.
Right. And your comment in your letter pertains to the signage for the right turn?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, this is different. All right, everyone, you think I'm right? I think I'm right. Okay. Okay. Anything else, guys? Forest, oh, your officers, officers, offers of dedication, that question. Hold on.
I did get an email today, and it looks like it may have been offered, but we had to check with Brian Nugent, so I think we should just leave it in there to get a sign off letter from him. There was a letter earlier today. I wasn't sure if it was Glenwood or this, but you sent her the offer of dedication for Forest.
Did you? I thought that was ...
Yeah, I think that was ...
Was that Glenwood?
I thought that was Glenwood.
I think it was an easement on Glenwood to serve ...
To serve Mi'kmaq-ysro'au.
Which we have to review. That, and we need to ...
You did get that?
There was another letter after that.
All right, hold on.
Came from Bruce Stern.
Was I on that?
It was very uncertain as to what it was. Give me a minute.
Okay, hold on.
Forwarded that to me.
Did I?
Yeah. I think your best to leave that as a condition of approval, and that way gives us a chance to review the meets and bounds, review the content of the easement, make sure that it's 100% correct.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't see it, but doesn't mean I didn't miss it. Okay. All right. Anything else, guys? Okay, so, I suppose we're, we're at the point where we can make a motion to approve, to, well, a motion for conditional final approval based on this resolution as amended, as we've been discussing.
And you need, you need the age to insert. That's when we open on.
Yes, we still need the age. Right, thank you. Well, and I don't think we should do ages. I think we should do grades. Don't you think?
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to find out.
Yeah. Ages is too difficult. Just tell us, you know, grades, nursery through whatever, and then as long as we don't go past first grade, I think we're probably comfortable. What ages?
What age is first grade?
Well, it's, they may be different, though. Their community may be different. He's right. We don't know. For us ...
Usually six, six is like first grade.
Kindergarten's five, right? First grade is six.
Seven would be second.
Seven is second.
Not to exceed age six. It ...
We should probably give both then. Grades with year, approximate years, five through, you know? Just in case. Definitely may be different. He's checking. Okay. I'm gonna suggest that you make your call. You're also Glenwood, but you're on the phone. So, let's have Malik Stern jump in while you're making your call, and then we'll table you, and you can come back when Malik Stern's done. Okay?
Okay.
Great. Okay, good. Malik Stern, you're up.
Hello.
Just put your appearance in for the record, please.
I'm Lucy Conley from Langantoli Engineering. I'm here for John Queenan.
Very good. And this is the Malik Stern applicant, what we call Malik Stern, Abraham Malik, the owner, and this, this is the one located off of Nanja Road. Nice to put a face to the name, Lucy. Okay, let me see if I can find you. All right. So, Malik Stern. All right, Malik Stern, we have a proposed, we have a proposed resolution. That Mike prepared. Hold on.
That's the old letter.
Yeah.
But it was asked to be put in the packet when he was coming last time, so I just included it.
Okay, good. All right. And then we have Mike's, Mark's comment letter, which I think should still be up there somewhere, but I'm not really sure how to get to it, so we're just gonna bring it up again.
And you should have a PDF for the site plan.
Okay. Hold on. I'm challenged. Which way? All right. Now, so, we booted you from the last agenda, because we were, we had not, we had not been able to send the plans to the Orange County DPW, and so we wanted to at least get them into them. That was done in mid-July, July 7 around, right? July 7.
July 7.
So, and we have not heard from them, you've not heard from them.
Correct.
But Mark, Mark and I, well, by email, we corresponded with Mark, and he felt comfortable in recommending, I guess, this board that we, we proceed with the resolution with the condition of you getting the Orange County DPW approval. Let me just pull up his comment letter, because I think they're all in one.
They are. And just as an update, after this was added, as, as you know, to the agenda late, so they, I drafted up some comments, and then after having submitted the comments to the board, had our staff identify that, in fact, there was an updated set of plans that had not been put in file yet. Two of the three comments have already been addressed by John Queenan. So, really, the only condition that is left is the Orange County DPW approval for the curb cut and the no parking signs. John has added the standard lighting note to the plans, and he has added a note restricting use of the storage in the basement and in the attic relative to storage for those businesses that are, that occupy the building, so they can't run out storage space to a third party, in other words. So, John has addressed that in the plans that are last revised July 5, 2017. So, as a correction, I will just tell you that the only open item that remains is the Orange County DPW, which obviously they're waiting, as we are, to hear back.
Okay.
Right. That set of plans was created to respond to your remaining comments and the comments we got in late June from DPW.
Okay. Do we have a public meeting on this one? A public hearing on this?
Public hearing was held on June 13.
Well, that's why. Because I wasn't here. Okay. Very good. Okay.
I've started noting on my comments where I list the dates.
That's good.
The date of the public hearing, so that might help if you, you need the date.
Did we get a revised narrative? Can anyone answer that question for me? I think we did. The narrative itself. Because we wanted to make sure the narrative was revised to add the restriction that, that the attic is storage only, or utilities, I think we said.
I don't recall receiving.
I don't bring mine either.
Last narrative I have is April 18th.
Yeah, they didn't revise it.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at as well.
I think what they did was they actually added the restrictive, the restrictive note on it, right onto the plans.
And what does it say?
I think the note language is in-
It is, yeah.
The resolution itself. In the bullets under two.
Okay.
And it's note six on the front of the plans.
Proposed building shall be used as a leasable office on the first and second floors. The basement and attic floors shall only be used to serve as tenant storage and shall not be utilized as additional leasable area. It is anticipated that the basement shall serve as storage for the first floor tenants and the attic shall serve as storage for the second floor tenants. So that is note six on the cover sheet.
What was, what was the comment regarding the non-functional attic dormers?
At one point in time, in the early discussions, you had said if they were going to be dormers, you wanted to make sure they didn't function. But then when you moved to allowing storage, sunlight made sense and the restriction replaced that, so I'm, I'm taking that comment out and removing that condition number.
Okay.
And our standard lighting note is on the lighting plan now. So those, those two issues, I believe John has addressed acceptably.
So I will insert the plan set information, but at this point, since it was a moving target, I didn't insert. I will keep condition one, which is a sign-off letter from Mark using the date of his memo as August 8, just as a final check. Condition number two stays. Condition number three will become our standard narrative condition with the narrative dated April 18th and we will have it attached. Four relates to the Department of Public Works. Five relates to the need to have Department of Health approval. Six will note the variances and attach them and the, the dates of them are recited. The placeholder number seven will be removed. Eight is your standard condition, as is condition nine.
I'm sorry, say that word for, for seven?
Seven, I'm just removing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I just usually keep a placeholder there to make notes at meetings.
Okay.
Our understanding is that five has been satisfied. Condition five?
I usually keep it here just as a checklist to make sure we, we, we have it by the time we submit the plans for signature, so if you have it, great.
So we have, uh, we've submitted the letter from the Health Department, um, previously, uh, for that.
This helps us as a checklist, so we know before it's signed.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So what will happen is, after this is already, you know, approved and filed by the town clerk, before I go to sign the plans, they, Noreen will put together an approval package for me. The filed resolution will be part of it and Mike will actually, in the comments, in, in the co, in the column, say for each condition whether it's been satisfied or not.
Right.
And that, and that actually gets, is part of our file. So I have that and that tells me I can sign the plans. So that's why we'll leave it there.
Right.
And then he'll be able to say, yes, this was satisfied and your, that letter will be part of the approval.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure the letter was what you were looking for. Great.
Yeah. No, I'm looking for the narratives still. I don't, I don't know.
Lucy said there is not one newer than April 18th.
I don't even have the April 18th, but it's not, just not coming up in my email. It could just be someplace else. It's all a matter of how organized I am with my emails, so, you know.
They all fit in that phone, huh?
Yeah, somewhere in the cloud, right? All right. Any, any other changes or issues with this? I was not, you know, I'd have to rely on you guys. I was not around, I think, the last time we really heard from these guys. So, I mean, really, the last notes I have. So Mark, you're saying for the lighting on the building, right, so just in the standard lighting note, okay.
Effectively, they are 100% complete, other than the County DPW on, on my end.
Okay. All right.
I don't have the plans in front of me, but is there room, um, on that site to meet the requirements that, uh, that is discussed with the Orange County DPW letter?
As far as the radius?
As far as the, uh, the entrance?
You mean the old letter? The original letter?
The June-
Right.
June 26.
As I recall, the comments had to do with the, the turn, the curb radius and, and like-
Right. I have, I have a plan.
Right, the radius of the curb, the clearing for a slight distance.
I've got that too.
Gary, if they can't satisfy those concerns, they don't have an approval.
They won't get an approval.
Okay, well, just-
I see.
We, we increased the, we responded to those comments by increasing the radius at the entrance, the radii, as much as we could and we rearranged the parking somewhat and the building is a bit smaller to respond, the building is a bit smaller.
You don't hear that every day? Is that, is that here? Am I looking at the right thing here? Screen?
Oh.
Yes. And you might want to look on my computer, might be easier.
Does he want a paper copy?
Do you have?
Have they not submitted one for everybody?
They only sent four. And I grabbed them as I was wanting a few offers. Mary, you want one?
You need to submit 12. Be helpful. All right. All right, you want to point out what you were saying, Lucy? Feel free to get up.
Uh, the main comment was to, that, uh-
You want to grab your microphone and just?
Take that one.
There you go.
So the main comment was that, um, that, is this on?
Yes.
Okay. The main comment was to increase these radius, these two radiuses as much as possible, which we did. And in doing that, we had to increase, we had to change this a bit in the parking area. The other comments related to signage, they're on, on the county sheets along, um, along Ninja Road.
So I'm sorry, you said you changed the radius and that caused what?
We, it, we had to move things back. And so in moving things back, the building got smaller. You know, it's these three, these three parking spaces are recessed to, to allow more room to access the loading area.
Okay. Nothing else changed?
No.
And your signage, your signage along Ninja Road, is it located over here?
Um, they're on the county sheet, um, which is, I have that. Six, I think?
Yeah, there are no parking signs.
There are no parking between signs and driveway ahead or something like that.
Yeah, it was like 300.
Like 495.
Is that right?
Uh, I think the sign, the signs are on the next sheet. Over here.
Well, morning, you're gonna have to do it like this.
Yeah, they're, they're down here.
Does that connect?
Oh.
There we go. Did I get it?
Yep.
Right here. That's as far as I'm going.
So they go out, um-
Oh, I see.
About almost 600 feet in each direction and then, um, so there's quite a few no parking between sign, signs.
How much does that space? What's that distance between, I can't see the numbers, so.
Uh, this is 175. 175, 175, um, each, each side and these are 200. I think it's exactly what Mike Carroll said, more or less on, uh, just- And then the, the- An additional sign, um, where's the? Oh, right here, the, the driveway ahead sign. And here.
So you have no parking signs on both sides of the road?
Yes.
What's the date of these plans?
July 5.
Okay. And that's what was sent to the county?
Yes.
Okay. And so we're waiting. All right. Any other comments? No? All right. Any other changes on the resolution? Mike, you've got everything you need?
I think so.
Okay, and you've got the-
I will need that narrative and zoning decision, but I'll work with Noreen.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'll need a copy of the narrative and the zoning decision to make sure I'm using the right ones, but I'll work with Noreen.
Okay. Yeah, guys just copied me on those emails, so I'm-
Yep.
In there. Um, all right. So we need a motion. Yeah? Anyone? Oh, maybe not, hold on. Are you guys just folding or do you have issues? Okay. Other than folding issues. Anyone want to make a motion to, I guess, uh-
Site plan approval?
Yep, for, for the site plan approval, subject to the resolution of approval as amended, well-
As amended at this meeting.
As amended at this meeting. Okay, I just made the motion.
I'll second.
Very good. Anthony?
Aye.
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 Okay. You're done. You're free.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. All right, let's, let's, um, Isaac, are you ready to go for which one? Do I finish up mikva? Okay, let's do that. All right, so what'd you find out?
Um, it's gonna be there from three to six years.
Three to six years old and that's what, uh, nursery?
That's till the first gr, nursery, kindergarten and preschool.
Okay.
It's three ages till the first grade.
Okay, so nursery, kindergarten, no.
Pre.
And preschool?
Yeah.
What's preschool?
What?
What's preschool?
It's before kindergarten, before first grade.
So it's-
Af-
Oh, it's after kindergarten?
Yes.
Is it before kindergarten or after kindergarten?
After kindergarten or before kindergarten.
I think it's usually nursery, preschool.
Nursery, preschool.
Me too. Kindergarten. That's what I think too. Okay. So that's, Mike, can we do that? Can we say nursery, pre, pre-K or preschool and kindergarten ages three through six?
Okay. Nursery, pre-K?
No, pre, preschool, I think you said. Preschool and kindergarten. Approximately ages three through six.
Okay.
What else was there? Was there anything else? I think that was it.
No, I think that's the only thing you were waiting for.
All right. Who wants to make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, for site plan approvals, subject to the resolution of approval submitted by Mike as amended tonight. Anthony made the motion, I'll second that. Lisa?
Aye.
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 All right. Moving along to Glenwood two. Appearances, please. Let's look at Kirk up here first. Resolution for Glenwood and we've got- Okay. Kirk's line. All right. Okay. So I see we've got a comment letter from, I'm sorry, appearances, please.
Kirk Walter.
Isaac Walter.
Okay. Uh, Glenwood, uh, site plan amendment for the second school building. We've got a comment letter from Mark and, right, I, I appreciate that Kirk, you submitted some information that you got regarding, um, state guidance on playgrounds.
Yes, I, the gentleman from the school district called me back a day after.
Figures, right? That's good. You at least sure heard from him.
I figured I'd pass along the information that he gave to me.
Okay. Let's see. Let's just see what's a logical approach here. Did the board have, um, the opportunity to review what Kirk submitted on, um, you know, the guidelines from the, on, from the state on the playgrounds? I know I had Noreen forward it to all of you. It's also in your packets. It's the email dated August 2nd. Anyone have any questions on that? Or any, or does anybody need to look at it now?
It's helpful.
It is helpful. Is there any discussion? Anyone want to discuss anything further about the playground?
Nope.
Nope, okay. I'll put my notes here, make sure I don't have anything. Okay. No, I didn't. Okay. So Mark, your comment letters seem to be pretty limited to me and we've got Kirk's August 4th letter, um, where he submits the revised plans and addresses some of your prior comments. So, Mark, why don't you take it from there?
Sure. As the boards were last week, there were some open items. You had requested if Kirk could have the plans revised and asked if I could get the plans turned around for tonight's meeting. Both were accomplished. Kirk issued a set of plans, uh- Actually, I don't think you added a revision date on this.
That says July 18th, I think.
July 18th.
That's the right date. I didn't give them until August 4th.
Okay, so it was a delayed delivery. So, but July 18th then, 2017 is the latest plans. Those plans successfully addressed all the open comments I had. The only item which is more of a universal issue is one of ensuring that the wetland markers that are on the final plan submitted for stamping match the board's policy until that is incorporated into the town's local law, that it matches the policy. And I distributed tonight what I believe was the last proposed requirements and I have shared that with Kirk in case the board says yes, that'll, at minimum, work for this application and can be further refined. Kirk could, uh, have the plans conform to that, that guideline.
Do I have updated plans in my system? PDF?
No, I did not submit new plans to the board.
Bad. Okay. But Mark's got them.
Yeah, I mean, it was pretty much just detail related.
Okay.
Couple of details that just need to be cleaned up and that's been done.
All right. My question is with the plan set, um, with the wetland markers, these are gonna be installed at the wetland boundary because we don't have the new ones yet, so this is still gonna follow the old one of fol, of being placed at the wetlands boundary, not the wetland buffer?
I think we talked about the buffer.
We talked about buffer.
We are, okay, all right. The only thing that's different is the decal, which is the picture that I asked Noreen to, to put up because-
It's in your packet.
Yeah. Um, the current decal that the town was using, it says land below this marker is, um, registered wetland, all land disturbances below and within 100 feet upland. But we, we don't want to say that anymore.
No.
So we'd have to get new decals. So that might be the only thing that, uh, I think would have to be addressed.
Okay. Again, the de, we can, we can have Kirk revise it to indicate that the sticker on the carbonate marker will be town standard, be the generic and that way we'll make sure that-
But the town standard's wrong, is what she's saying, so we have to have it changed.
But it also is inconsistent with what I wrote, because I didn't have this.
Right.
So we just need to make sure we get a final version for everyone.
Right.
Yeah. Where, where is what you added to the resolution on wetland?
Eight. Well, there's two things. Seven is during construction, we wanted the wetlands to be marked with construction fencing and then before the CO, the markers. Accordance, in accordance with planning board policies, which is the written document we've been referring to. So it's condition seven, eight.
Should it be attached? Shouldn't it be attached?
We can do that.
I suppose, though, if the policy changes-
Well, I think we could use this and just edit the bottom paragraph with, uh, remove the 100 feet, because it'll actually be the buffer. So I can rework that and we can have that for the next meeting.
I just like something attached to this, so we're better.
It's probably better not to attach it because it's a moving target.
It is moving, but yeah, that concerns me.
So it's whatever the policy is at the time when we finalize it.
Okay.
I think it's better to leave it out.
Okay. Everyone's good with that?
Yeah, just the point is if it turns out that you can mark the buffer, then the sign goes at the buffer.
Well, that's what we're asking, that's what we're hoping for the policy to be.
This is asking for buffer marking.
We wanted a buffer.
We're not being, um, we're not being exact about if it's gonna be at the buffer or at the actual wetland delineated area.
But both these conditions, seven and eight, refer to the wetland buffer edge.
Yeah, we are, being specific, because we wanted it at the buffer, not at the wetland boundary. And that's what we're hoping the policy will be. That's currently the policy, so.
Hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll circulate a revised, revised version and then adopt the policy and we'll get the wording correct. And, um, we can actually get ahold of carcinite before we're all done and they can issue a new standard sticker with a part number.
What I will do on the plan that we prepared that Marquez shows the fence at the buffer, we show proposed signage at the buffer. I used the sign detail that the DEC had had me use in the past. So I just need to revise that sign detail. And what I will do is I will just say, uh, to conform to the latest revised Town of Monroe wetland sign standard or something to that effect.
The sign itself, the marker that I reference is fine, it's the sticker that's now gonna change.
And I guess since the carcinite markers are actually in the buffer, if we get the stickers later or the decals later, do, are, can they be affixed later? Or do they go on at the manufacturer, on the markers?
No, I think they're sticking on, they could be put on.
Okay, so they could be put on later if it's, if it changes again.
And by the resolution, the markers are not going up till just before CO, so there is time.
Well, this one, we wanted to leave the markers. Now, we're going to start putting the markers in before...
Yeah, we didn't want it at CO. We wanted it earlier.
I thought you wanted construction fencing. That's what I had in my notes.
On this particular situation, construction fence was fine. The markers, once they're ready to go, can be put on, because they're not going to be close to you... Even close to the buffer.
Okay. If you're on this particular case... Construction fencing, then we'll...
If we take other projects where they're running equipment very close to that buffer, there may be an issue.
Yeah, I thought we wanted it before CO, because we were concerned about construction disturbance.
That's what it has before CO.
But I guess so you're saying the fencing might take care of that, we wouldn't need the markers?
No. I meant if you don't put the markers up until before CO, at the time of construction, they can go park a backhoe out there and not know. So, it's... What I thought we had discussed was we're going to put up that orange construction fencing at the buffer during construction. When construction is done and before CO is issued, then we put up the markers.
I think what we may want to do in the final version of the policy is actually adopt some signs that go on to the construction fencing. A similar wording, that it is a restricted area. Have that as part of the construction operation. And then when the construction fence and the temporary signs get taken down, the permanent markers get put in. That might be the best way.
That'll protect them.
I agree.
And the markers won't get hurt during construction, then?
Yeah. That way, we'll have nice, fresh, new markers after they tear down the fence. But I'll work on an update.
But for this one, we can leave the conditions the way they are. When we finalize the policy, it'll be self-effectuating.
I'll coordinate with Mary before the next meeting. We'll have something that hopefully that addresses both construction and the permanent marker.
All right. So, then the way you've got it, where in here?
I'll leave it. Construction fencing during construction before CO, markers. In both cases, at the wetland buffer edge.
Uh huh. Yeah, so it pretty much stays, right?
Yep.
And the section five, the variance of decisions, you're going to insert the dates once we get them?
Yep.
Okay.
Can I go through the resolution beyond that? There's the plan set, and I will include the footnote, just in case the plans get changed at all by a report letter in terms of the revision date. But it looks like it's currently July 18th. Under public improvements, there's always the two versions. One is if there's enough public improvements, it requires a public improvement security agreement. I don't think that's what we need in this case. Mark?
No, I don't think so.
So, instead, we use the or, which we don't need, because we don't need to list them, because there's nothing beyond dedicated improvements.
Here, can you just hold on one second?
Yeah. What kind of public improvements we talking about here? Does anybody have a copy that I could take a look at?
Resolution? Uh, Noreen, do you have a copy for that?
Air mail. I wasn't very good at that.
Okay, we're going to go back to the wetland marker issue? Guys?
Yep.
I'm only... Because Mary and Gary have an issue.
Well, we were just clarifying that it is the outside buffer edge.
What is?
The fencing and then eventually the markers.
Yeah. What else would it be?
That's correct. And that is the way we have it shown on the plan.
That's what I understood, too.
It could be the edge between the wetland and the...
Oh, no, no. No, we want it on the outer bu...
Right, that's why we were talking about...
Outlining the actual buffer, the outside buffer.
We have the orange construction fence and the ultimate wetland signage 100 feet away from the edge of the actual...
Right. Otherwise, it would be actually marking the wetland boundary. That would make sense. We want the wetland buffer boundary.
I'll add the adjective outside in each condition.
Right, okay. Good. All right. So, we can go on. Mike, I'm sorry to have interrupted you.
All right. So, at the top of page four, under or, we will list the improvements, which are the loop road, the drainage facilities, and signage.
Right. Because what you missed there was that they do not... Mark's opinion is that there is not a need for public improvement security agreement here.
Under specific conditions, I'll reference Mark's memo of July 8th and condition one, two, three remain the same, as does four. I'll add the date and attach the variance in condition...
His August date memo, you mean?
Yeah, 8/8.
8/8. What did I say? I'm at 8/8.
He has 8/8 written down.
Yeah, I have 8/8.
Okay, I'm sorry. Do ahead.
I'll add the date of the variance decision and attach it in condition five. Six is... Stays. Seven will change to outside buffer edge, so will eight. Nine is something we discussed, that's not a problem. The narrative, I'll need the date and a copy of that. Eleven is the standard condition on drainage. Conditions 12, 13, and 14 go away, and we use just condition 15, because there's no public improvement security agreement. I don't believe there's any offer of dedication, right?
There are no offers of dedication.
So, 16 goes away, and 17 is your standard condition.
Okay.
Mike, was comment number... I'm sorry, I'm catching up to you. Was comment number three, it says Department of Public Works. I don't know that that's applicable, is it? Does that apply here? Is the Orange County Department of Public Works... I don't believe it does.
No, not for the roadway. They had approval of the sewer.
Right. So, that's in comment four. Yeah, okay. I'll take it out, sorry. And with regard to variances, on this particular... We got a height variance for building one. Is that what you're referring to? I may have just carried that from the last one. There's no variance for Glenwood two, then? No. Okay. I probably carried it over from the original position.
You don't recall. We have to look at that.
No, there definitely isn't. We did not make an application to the CBA.
I don't recall any.
There isn't.
Yeah, because you didn't have any parking issues, because that was all...
We're not having the auditorium in the basement, which lowered the building, which...
Right.
Okay.
Yep, I'll take it out.
So, five is coming out?
Yes. So, one number six, Mike, the wetlands issuance of the permit for disturbance. We're not proposing any disturbance. It's just we're waiting on a jurisdiction... Just a delineation? We're just waiting on the jurisdictional determination, which I believe you correctly in your last sentence said that the board agreed no certificate of occupancy shall be issued until we get that from the court. I'll change it to jurisdictional determination.
Four is staying, right?
Yes.
All right. Five, we were saying comes out, because there wasn't.
Yeah, that was for the first school. On mic, on number nine, with that conceptual future Larkin Drive connection. Yes. We do propose grading in that area. So, we're limited to erection of structures.
I'm sorry, say that again?
There's the issue of the potential future county roadway.
Right.
And we wanted to make sure there were no incursions into that area that would make construction of that roadway impossible. We certainly don't want to erect structures. Kirk was pointing out the grading is shown in that area. I take it that grading wouldn't interfere with the ability to construct the road? No, and this is something actually the board took a pretty close look at, and we even changed the plan a little bit after the site visit and talking about grading to... Which is by the nature of this...
I don't think the language changes, because we're simply saying there can't be...
Well, there is grading.
Oh, because we...
No encroachment by erection of structures is permitted in that area. I'll just take out the grading part. Number 10, my narrative is dated May 2017.
May what?
Just May.
2017?
Yeah, I guess.
Noreen, can you double check that? Not now, but just so, Mike, we know that's right one.
Of the narrative?
Uh huh.
Yeah. I have it right here.
Here, read both of the sentences.
Okay.
What did we say about six?
What did we do with six?
Is there anything on six?
Jurisdictional determination only is what we're waiting on. There's no need for a permit. There are no disturbance proposed.
So, 12, 13...
And 14 go away. Because it's 12, 13, and 14, four, 15, and it's 15 that we will use.
I know offers are dated. No offers, right?
Correct. That goes away.
Sorry, I'm just catching up.
I don't think there's any... I'm sorry, Audrey, did you just say this? There's no offers of dedication?
No, no, I said, no, I was just catching up. I was making a note, no offers. Okay. Anything else? All right. So, what's the plan here, Mike? You're going to circulate a revised resolution?
If you think that's necessary, or you can act on this one.
It's all rudimentary, though.
It's mostly removal of items that are in the plan and have a date or till.
Yeah, I don't think it's that complicated.
Yeah, it's really not. Let me just double check the narrative date. I mean, it's subject to the narrative date being correct.
May 2017.
Whatever the last one was, I don't know. I can, you know...
We only prepared and submitted one.
Oh, well, that makes it easy, right? Okay, hold on. All right. So, here's the thing. In June... I had the concern that the plans don't match the narrative. I think actually Mark brought that up as well.
Yeah, that had to do with water.
Right.
But that's been revised.
On the plans, but the narrative's still fine? Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, then by that time, the water had shaken out far enough with Tom Cusack's analysis and well testing and the two years' worth of data, that we realized we could use the treatment facilities in the existing school, because they're twice the size they needed to be, to backfeed this building. But my plan... And then so that's all explained in the narrative. My plan still showed a direct connection of building two to the existing well. The plans that Mark has. So, the current plans are consistent with the narrative? Yes. That's correct.
I don't have the narrative. It says it was dropped off. I don't have it in my email. So, I can't even confirm that. All right. Well, okay, that's something that we want to make sure of. But I'm okay with proceeding as revised, if the rest of the board is... Yeah. Okay, I'm getting lots of... Yep, okay. All right. So, a motion to proceed with the resolution of approval of the site plan for Glenwood Partners as revised tonight. Who wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Who wants to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Lisa?
Aye.
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 Okay. You feel so productive.
It's like the end of a chapter. I'm going to miss you guys.
No, you're not.
I'm sure you'll be back to build another school.
Isaac's going to go home and do his happy dance with his kids. Right?
Thank you very much.
Next month is going to be a planning board meeting? I don't think so.
Uh, yes, there will be. It just won't be potentially without you. We'll miss you.
Isaac, do you need this resolution?
No, you can have it, if you would like.
Comments for John, second to none. Good night, everybody.
Night, good night.
All right. Okay. All right. So, the next on our agenda is the administrative section, which is the minutes. And we have... Everyone, I guess, should have brought them. Were they... Yeah, I don't know. All right. So, I'm going to need a second to look at the May 9. Let me see. So, we might want to just take a quick break. I think I might go quicker. I don't know that we need Mark for this. Although, you know what, though? Ooh, I hate to do that, though. I was going to say we should skip quickly to the other stuff that Mark would weigh in on, but then we'd never get to the minutes. You know, I'm afraid that we'll spend too much time and then we won't get to the minutes again. I know. But you promised me we're going to do the minutes. Okay. Everyone's going to stick it out. We're going to do the minutes.
We started a half hour early, so...
Okay. All right. So, let's then discuss the application procedures, the forms. Guys, we're all supposed to look at those.
They're in the PDF, though.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I put it on that.
Yeah.
What did you get down early?
Oh, my eyes are going. All right. What did I do? What happened? So, oh...
Well, the cord came loose.
I disconnected. Oh, no.
I think you're... Give me a second.
Okay. What do you need?
The application form, will you bring it?
I have one.
Hold on.
Let me share one.
There's project opening, the entity disposal, the whole application. I'll watch it on the screen.
Okay.
And we will mark it up.
It's a mess, anyway.
All right. So... I don't know that... It's up to you guys how you want to do this. Did anyone actually go through it and mark it up, or have suggested comments or changes?
I'm sorry, Audrey, I didn't have an opportunity to do it.
Okay. Has anyone got anything good? Well, the packet itself is the one that was the big staple thing. And that is actually what the applicant would see if they clicked on it on the website. It's this big thing. And then separately, you'll see it's the application appearance procedures, right? And then it's got... And then... It's actually different on the website, because the project opening form is part of it. Just remanded, either way. So, yeah. So, this thing is what's there. So, let's maybe do that first. Uh-oh. Why are you back? Okay. Go ahead. Come on back up.
Let them sit down.
Yep.
It's minor. It's semantics.
Oh, is this Glenwood still?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're back on for Glenwood.
So, outside, Isaac's saying, okay, what can I start by? What do you sign the plan? So, I noticed here in the sewer, number four, the sewer connection, it says approval is subject to review and approval by the connection in the sewer district. The plan shall not be signed until such written approval is delivered. We are just pursuing a lateral connection for this plan, because the main is there already. And my experience with the sewer department is they're not going to entertain the lateral connection application unless we have an approved plan.
So, it's sort of the cart before the horse, kind of thing?
You want to tie it to building permit?
Mark, what do you think?
No, I understand what they're saying. It's they're not looking for a sewer main extension, they're just looking for a lateral connection.
Right.
And being that they border the town... The county sewer line, they're entitled to connect in.
It's literally in front of the building.
Yeah, it's there. The other issue is as far as, for Mickle would be different, because those we have easements and all. This is right on their property, direct connection.
So do we need the condition at all, or do we tie it to building permit?
Does the county allow a lateral to their main?
Yeah, I think the answer is, is it should be, um, should be before building permit.
I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, 'cause Ben should have that permit in hand before he issues the building permit.
Right.
But not before you stamp the plans.
So I will change that last sentence to, "No building permit will be issued until such written approval is delivered."
Well, you can ask.
Um, we can make it, um, before the CFO?
I don't know that the town wants to issue a building permit unless they know that you have your sewer connection authorization.
Yeah, I think, speaking with Ben, under the state code, he can only issue a permit knowing that there are facilities available.
Right.
And that's the permit.
So the first sentence is going to stay?
Yeah.
The second sentence?
Will read, "No building permit will be issued until such written approval is delivered."
I think that's fair.
And then Isaac asked the same question about the water supply with the Department of Health.
Which number?
It says number two. "It's subject to and conditioned upon delivery of written approval by the Department of Health."
I would think the same on that.
And, "No building permit will be issued."
You've already got the system, it's just a matter of getting the authorization to feed the second building from the first building.
It's just a question of connecting. And there's correspondence in the record for this building.
Well, we weren't holding up the signing of the plans for that anyway, but I think it's good to say that the building permit won't be issued until you've got the approval.
The same sentences we put in four today.
Yeah.
When I read that outside, I wasn't sure of the intent of that, so that's why I said that. Isaac, I don't know.
Okay, hold on. Just wanna add that.
Would you like me to just bring the plans up to Chairperson Schwartz's desk now with a pen?
I need twelve copies.
Okay, but I think we have to probably...
I'd like to rescind then.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to rescind the approval of the first resolution. Is that the way it should be worded?
Sure, that'll work.
And, and maybe at the same time make the motion to...
We usually do.
To approve it with the amendments we just discussed.
Yeah, just do it in one.
Okay, and, to approve...
The resolution.
The resolution as revised on, do we wanna say the specific items, two and four, or whatever it was?
I think it's on the video, we know what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. As revised. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Lisa?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, back to administrative, back to administrative review of the application and proceedings procedures packet. Did anyone get a chance to look at it, and does anyone have any comments?
Your front cover sheet should probably indicate that the deadline for submittal is per your adopted schedule. So that you don't have this saying fourteen days...
Oh, okay.
And having a schedule that potentially could have a different day because of holidays or something else. It should just be as per the board's published schedule.
So here's, so I know some people have some confusion, because the application itself, if you look at it, is an application for subdivision plat approval. But not one for site plan. So right off the bat, I get questions from people going, well, where's the one? Where's the application for site plan? So, um, I, I think that we have to come up with something that addresses both, or maybe a separate one for each, but frankly, that you could have both in an application.
Most boards have a place where you check...
Right.
On the top, either subdivision, site plan, or lot line change.
Well, this could be both, too.
You can check both.
Right.
If you, if it applies.
Yeah, I think it has to be.
The checklists many times are different for content, which is what's in the law as well. But the application should work for either individually or a combination.
Given the fact that, and I think I've told you this before, we have yet to find this document in Word version in the system. So, we need a whole new one, anyway. And so I, I frankly think that given the state that it's in, we probably should look for some other versions from other towns to see what's working. And I would look to maybe Mark and Mike to let me know what they like and what they've seen out there that's good.
I can probably get you a couple of Word versions to add.
Yeah, and, and then maybe we go from there, because there's a lot about this that, that bothers me. But that was just one of them, that it really, it just misleads people, and they go, well, well, I don't want subdivision, I want site plan, so... But, and then the site, and then, there's a document in here, which, so it's, what do they call this thing? Payment of application fee, doesn't really have a name, but on the cover sheet, that's what they call it. No, no, it's not. I don't know what this is, but it's the document that says, "I blank acknowledge my responsibility to reimburse the town."
We should give that a name and include it as a required document in the cover sheet.
Right, and beyond that, though, the other thing is, is this. Given that we now understand that the code requires us to send the bills to the applicant for, and they have fifteen days to object to those invoices, or we can then pay them. We don't always know to whom we're supposed to be sending them. And so I think as part of the application, there not only should be the sign-off that they're acknowledging that they, that this, the code exists, and they have to, they're responsible for the bills, but also that they're identifying to whom they are sent, and that they, and the method by which they are sent. That it will be by email unless they otherwise say so in this application.
Could be right on that same form.
So it's clear, yeah. And then, and then in the same respect, we've had the issue of having the applicant have a representative show up, but then not clearly tell us what their relationship is to the applicant. You know, someone just shows up and says, well, I'm here for the applicant, but they're not the project manager, they're not the architect, they're not the engineer, and they're not the owner, and you just don't even know how they're related, and then they never come back again, someone else shows up.
I think you should have, for anyone who represents an applicant for the board, there should be a completed proxy form, authorizing them to represent the application.
And that's where I was going. I don't know if it's a formal proxy form, or it's just identifying the people that will speak on their behalf, how's that work?
No, it was an actual proxy form, which I'll, when I obtain that other package, I'll send you that as well.
Okay.
We've had cases where there's been three proxy forms filled out on one application, because there'd be more than one person representing.
And the owner's endorsement is a similarly, similarly formal document that make, because often it's a contract bendee or someone other than the property owner who's making the application.
But we wanna know that we're talking to an authorized individual. Yeah, and, and that, I don't see that really in here, so, um, you know, and we've had that issue before. All right, and then what was the other thought?
If, if truly you're gonna scrap, as it may be, this version of the application package, because you need to get it all set up in Word, maybe Mike and I can take a stab at taking another Word version, trying to conform it to the general format that, of the components that you need to continue with, add the items that might be missing, and generate a new application package that you can mark up. Rather than mark this one up, if we're gonna have to rework it?
I don't wanna mark this one up.
We can maybe...
Maybe after we create the new one, we go through this and see if there's anything that is missing from the one we did, but this is too hard to work from.
Yeah, I think...
No, I don't wanna work from this one. I mostly want people to look at this to say what they think is not working, so we can then do something new that addresses all of those things.
Why don't you let us take a stab at it?
Yeah.
And taking another version, add to it those forms which may be unique to Monroe, and create a new package that then you can mark up.
Right. Yeah.
And it'll be words, it'll be all easier change.
Now, in terms of what we have, we have subdivisions, site plans.
Special permits.
Special permits. Lot line changes.
Wetland applications.
Wetlands and accessory apartments, so we actually have, you know, four or five categories of potential applications.
And the project opening form, which is also in your packets, would need to be revised for the accessory apartment. But I think you made your own.
Yeah, I did, and I think these are, Mark and I were saying, these are internal forms, really, although the way I created the accessory... The project opening form and...
No, the project opening form is not an internal form.
The applicant fills it in.
Absolutely.
Oh, I thought that was something that you filled out, process.
Absolutely not.
They had to bring it to me.
It's, what's that?
They bring it to me completely.
Absolutely, they, they are required to submit it, because that basically is them figuring out what they're, telling us what they're submitting, and what, and then figuring out what the fee is, and then we double check it.
Well, that was the way I prepared the accessory apartment permit application, so maybe they're just pages of, of the packet, but if they've become significantly different, then maybe we should have two or three applications.
Okay.
I think we'll try to see how it looks when we've done it. If we can make it a series of pages, that this won't be the accessory apartment section.
Yep.
You know, 'cause conceivably, somebody can apply for everything at once, but...
Yeah, and it just seems to me, there's a lot of, I mean, this thing is really typical subdivision map notes, and there's a lot of stuff in here that I suspect is really outdated. I mean, there's a reason why it's this thick, and it's not just because they have the short form EIF and the long form EF, and they actually have well testing protocols, and then proposed subject system requirements, and drainage requirements, and... I don't know how up to date these are.
I don't know that we wanna include those or reference the code.
Well, that's what I, where I'm going with this. I, the, no one's looked at these for years. So I don't really know how accurate they are, nor whether that's something we really wanna do.
And part of the recommendation that you made to the town board on the zoning chapter change is that the required elements of the application and of the post-approval package are subject to policy of the planning board that you can change from time to time. So it may be that we're not gonna have these antiquated, you know, linen copies and all kinds of things...
Right.
That are not useful to us any longer, but are stuck in the code, and it's hard for us to do away with.
Yeah.
But we don't know where the town board's gonna go with that issue, but we can, we'll take a crack at it. I don't know if you, if you find it helpful, if you were preparing an application, to see that level of detail of requirement in the application? I think you'd normally go through the chapter and...
No, and, and, you know, such as some of the standard notes that we've created over the last five years.
I suspect are not reflected in these.
No, and I just provide those to the applicant as needed, and, either in comments or by email.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose there's some merit to kind of memorializing what that current, those current standards are, and having them, but at the same time...
You don't want it to be overwhelming.
You want it to be fluid, and you don't want it to be overwhelming. So, and they may change, we tweak them as we go, so I'm not really sure how to handle that. I kinda like the idea of memorializing what the current are, what they currently are, but there's downsides to it.
And any policies that you formally adopt may need to be attached.
Right.
But if they're merely standard notes and standard requirements that are, as you say, fluid, there's no need to include those.
What would be an example of a policy that we doubt that we would want, that may be the wetland policy?
The wetland policy is really the only formal policy that we've, we've considered.
Or in subdivision, we say that whatever size structure you show on your plan is the limit of what you can construct, because your drainage study has to match it.
Although, although we've asked that that be part of the new code.
Yeah, but right now it's not in the code, it's just a policy.
So that would be a very worthwhile item, because that impacts...
Yes.
The stormwater pollution prevention plan.
So I, I mean, I, so I kinda feel like certain of those policies should be memorialized, and then we would have the obligation of updating them as we tweak them, but...
I think you could add those to the package, and you may end up with a half a dozen.
Okay.
At most.
So maybe give that some thought. And then think about the, remember, we had this horrible, what I think is a horrible issue. Uh, they, the town board is, or maybe Bonnie, someone's proposed that Ben not be the gatekeeper, the code enforcement official not be the gatekeeper for, for applications. So essentially, we would be making the determination of whether or not site plan approval is needed instead of Ben.
Whether reuse is allowed or...
Whether reuse is allowed, yeah, all those things. I'm really hoping that the town board, um, you know, takes our advice and, and does not change it and leaves it with Ben. If that's the case, I had submitted to Ben a form, an example of a form from the village of Monroe, that sort of helps him, for the applicant to fill out, I think I mentioned this last time. And so I'll send that to you. I think that you should not spend time on it, though, yet. Well, I, well, I was gonna say you shouldn't spend time on it yet, because, hey, they may adopt that, and we may be the gatekeeper. But until they do that, we're still this...
Well, let's assume we prevail on Ben to do it, even if they don't.
Oh, that's possible, too. Now, I submit that to Ben, I haven't heard from him, but I have not met with him lately, and that's my own fault, so I will...
Most building inspectors don't volunteer for things like that, but Ben's a pretty good guy.
No, he's been, no, he's been eager. He and I have been talking about this for months, and, and he's the one who's very much, he's already doing it. And he would love to have a form that streamlines it, for the applicant to give him all the information, so he could just say yep or no. And then they would take that with them to the ZBA or to the planning board.
With him being effectively here full-time, he very much wants to be aware of what applications are being processed.
It makes sense.
So it gives him that information, whereas he wouldn't get it if he's removed, removed from the process.
It certainly makes sense, and to not give it to a planning board where the chair is part-time, that's silly. I, I just, but, so I'm, I'm lobbying, I will lobby this, I haven't...
Plus, if you were to, to tell an applicant, "Know that use isn't allowed," they have nowhere they can go, because they can't appeal from you, they can only appeal from Ben.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
So it, it, it doesn't work.
Did we say that in your comment, Larry?
Yeah.
I think we did.
Yeah.
Okay, right, so I will send that to you as well. And, okay, so that was mine, those were my comments. Did anyone else have anything on this?
Do you feel comfortable with the percentages on escrow?
No. No, not at all. I'm kinda thinking this, that where it's a small, like, we have the application, the fee, the initial amount is the twenty-five hundred, and then, you know, you add on from there for fifty dollars per thousand square foot, or whatever it is. Where it's under, say, five thousand dollars, the eighty percent threshold is really a pain in the patootie. And so I'm, I'm thinking, I don't know if it's five thousand dollars, or if it's something greater, but where, where the total amount is coming out to be, say, up to, let's just use as an example, up to five thousand dollars, maybe the threshold should be, you know, sixty percent.
Well, can't you do a, a minimum value, or if it doesn't exceed...
A minimum?
Thirty percent.
Well, a minute, well, yeah.
Or whichever value is less.
What do you hope to achieve? That you don't have to ask for the escrow to be replenished every month, or you want it to last longer? Because you would know, you can take a look at what, what are the, for a category of application, what is usually the combined total of bills between Mark and myself?
Generally, I mean, I, it's rare that in any one given month, I have bills from all consultants and vendors of over a thousand dollars. It's almost always under a thousand dollars.
What's the current replenishment threshold?
Eighty percent.
So if they go from a hundred percent to eighty percent, then you have to ask them again?
Yes.
Most boards are down in the twenty-five percent range.
It's really, so just for, so explain for the edification of anyone watching. So, yeah, if it's a twenty-five hundred dollar escrow, the second I use five, there's five hundred dollars of bills, I gotta ask for more money. And it's, it's, and of course, I, I have some leeway in the code to use my own judgment and weigh that, but it's...
Why don't you have something like for a major subdivision, a minimum five thousand dollar balance, or forty percent, or twenty-five percent, whichever is greater?
The classification is what's a major subdivision, so...
Well, five lots.
Five lots or more.
We define it in the, in the regulations.
Okay, so, anything over five lots.
Five lots or more.
And then logically, so what would that? No, we, we can't tell from that.
Would you be able to plug in the number that Anthony has suggested, or the percentage that you think, based upon what typically happens is the most usable?
Well, that's a project, so the project opening form does that for you. So if we took that as an example, so let's just say a commercial subdivision? I don't know that one as well, though. Yeah.
My suggestion is, is that you do twenty-five percent of the initial amount is the trigger, or a greater amount if deemed appropriate by the chair.
That second language is there already.
My reason for it is, is that if you know that you've got a traffic consultant looking at something, you've got the water consultant looking at something, and you now have got a lot of potential billing coming up, you then have the right to say twenty-five percent of the, you know, close to the twenty-five is not gonna be enough, and you can just ask for another amount. It leaves you the flexibility to adapt to the activity on the project.
So you're saying when it reaches twenty-five percent of the initial amount?
It's automatic, that they have to replenish. However, if they're at forty percent or thirty percent, and you've got a, four consultants working on a major project, you know you're gonna have a heavy amount of billing?
Oh, yeah, I can ask for more.
Because there's an EIS being reviewed, and you've got three or four consultants looking at it, you could say, "We need X amount of dollars, because there's a lot of activity on this project for the next month and a half."
Or maybe not X amount of dollars, but seventy percent.
Recognizing...
Or replenish it now, don't wait.
The potential problem with waiting until it goes to twenty-five percent, and it's been a historic problem in the town, is...
Yes.
Say, an applicant doesn't, he decides he's gonna walk away from a project. And you had, and your escrow had reduced itself to twenty-seven percent at the time he did. And then you get bills from your consultants, you don't have enough money to pay them. And that's caused problems at the town board level in terms of budget, and of course, it's caused problems for us in not having enough money there. I think that's where the eighty percent came from. If that's unworkable, that's why I was asking. I don't have an, an idea of what it is that you get in, in bills on an average monthly basis, and what would be the appropriate percentage. You gotta be careful, if it's too low, that you don't put the town in a position where it doesn't have the funds necessary to pay the consultants who've done the work for you.
We certainly have times when, you know, it's getting low, we say, you know, submit this amount. this amount. And they either don't respond or they say, yeah, yeah, yeah. And by the way, did you get the check tonight?
He said, don't bring it to me in the morning.
You keep saying that.
I know, but I didn't want to say that.
We won't, yeah. So, but we've been hearing that for three months.
Two, yeah.
But that might be, it might be okay though, anyway. But yes, that happens. The prior problem was that no one was looking at it whatsoever. So it went into negative numbers.
Different problem.
It was a different problem. If someone's actually monitoring it, I think that we can come up with some sort of threshold that works.
And if the 25% is enough to cover what you'd normally have in a given month and you're on top of it, it's not going to be a problem.
Well, under the current, and at the end of the application packet is the actual resolution with the fees. I think that the lowest amount that you're going, we're going to have is, well, so it's $2,500 per lot for a residential subdivision. That's the lowest amount. Then we've got 350. I'm trying to think of what's the lowest amount we would ever have on one of these projects in the initial. And I can't imagine this to be much less than $2,500. Even on like a commercial, non-residential where, for instance, we have Kingdom Hall where they're not actually proposing anything, any real change. So we just had them give us like the $2,500 flat.
Yeah.
You know, that's probably the lowest we ever will have. Because even with like a multifamily residential site plan, it's 500 per unit. Okay, so there you might have, maybe you only have four units or something. I suppose you can have two, only a $2,000. And then your 25% is a pretty low number. That could be a problem, the 25% on something small like that.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, the one thing you should look at also is on page five of the fees, you're getting $2,500 per lot for residential and only 350 for commercial.
Um, yeah, how come?
Good question.
What would be the logic for that?
I would understand that it could likely be less, but that's very dramatic.
Yeah.
Looks like one was raised and the other one was missed.
Oh, it could be mistake. Remember, I caught the other mistake which had me asking certain applicants for $70 million. So, you know.
They said they'd bring the check tomorrow.
Let's just add to your list of, yes, it was. Let's just add to your list of things to do to please look at the resolution with the fees and really look at them for today's, you know, market.
We will.
And maybe suggest to us changes. All right? Based on what you're seeing and what seems to work. All right? Okay, so that's that. I actually thought the accessory apartment permit application they prepared was great. It's crazy in a way because it's.
The amount of detail they require.
It's so much detail. But it is actually the checklist that they would have to go through to submit a full package to us, a full application to us. And I wonder had, it would have been lovely for the town board to look at this before they took the lot to see the hurdles these people are going to have to go through. And I see you have in here the 250 for the fee and then the 750 for the escrow. So, and that was in your letter. So we'll see what the town board says about that. But I didn't have changes to that. Yeah. Did anyone have changes to the project opening form? Is that going to always be tweaked as well? And that's you, right? Here we go. Yeah, so that would change based on what you find, what we decide on the fee structure.
Yeah.
Okay, now.
There seems to be a typo on that. I mean, I know it might be.
Oh, is there where?
But, you know, if you have residential subdivision zero to 50 and then residential subdivision over 51, then 51 gets.
It's free.
Yep. Yep, thank you. 51 is free. Make a note. Yep, not intended. Thank you. Yeah. So just technically speaking, procedural, how we do this. So we all decide after your recommendations what we want to do. We come up with forms. Do the forms have to be approved by the town?
No.
Now, if there's a content change though, like difference fees.
The fees the town approves by, yes.
And thresholds. The town would have to approve that. But forms wise, I don't think so.
And if you were going to change code provisions regarding what must be submitted, the town board would have to do that. Now, I suppose if you didn't insist that the applicant, there's waiver authority in the subdivision regulations and I believe in the zoning chapter that says you can waive the required elements of submission in appropriate circumstances, which is a good clause to have. So if you want to ignore the requirement that linen prints be submitted as part of the post approval project, I think you'd be wise to do it. I don't even think people know how to produce.
I don't even know what that is.
I think if you offer someone providing PDFs instead of linen plans, they're going to jump right on it.
I've never seen the linen plans, have I?
The old plans.
Yeah.
Mylar's.
They're older than mylar's.
The Mylar's.
They're older than Mylar's.
Isn't linen different than the Mylar?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, the Mylar's is like the plastic stuff. That we get. And then I understand why you would need that still, you know, on the site.
If you're filing a subdivision, county still is looking for Mylar's.
Right.
But a site plan, I don't know what the town would do with a linen plat of the site plan.
Okay. And then Mark, you and I have spent some time talking about the submission process and how many, the number of the plans that we want PDFs submitted every time. There's some other things too, and they're kind of escaping me now, but.
That, and one of the items that the town board is going to have to deal with separately, which is, I think, hampering us on every application, is for them to formalize the procedure by which they want to have performance bonds established for both subdivisions and site plans and how they want to establish the applicability of fee percentages. I believe the code right now is very clear when it comes to roadway public improvements, but it is not so helpful in my mind when it speaks to site plans.
Wasn't that in your comment letter though?
Yes, so they.
And we submitted that to the town board.
So hopefully that will get some.
And Brian is well aware of it because.
Yeah, right, we had that and there was emails back.
So once that's resolved, then we would be able to even create some more wonderful forms for project closeout, which would help collect the correct fees for different types of applications. And one thing that I hope that the town board will clarify, it's very problematic, this public versus private definition. I truly would hope that the term public as it applies to privately owned elements could discontinue. It's very confusing. I know no one who calls roadways and storm drainage and water lines and sewer lines on a private project that will never be dedicated to town calls them public improvements. It just.
I think the reason was if the only authority the town has for bonding is for public improvements. So if you want to bond things that are not dedicated improvements, you really can't require private improvements to be bonded. So.
What we've done in a lot of municipalities is that when the site plan is approved, they're required to submit a improvement cost estimate. That cost estimate gets accepted by the planning board. The inspection fee that covers all the departments and engineering to do inspections of the private improvements for consistency with the site plan approval, that fee is collected based on the improvement estimate. If someone cares to ask for a CO before landscaping is finished or retaining wall is finished for that area of the site plan, they are asked to post a guarantee prior to the issuance of the CO to guarantee that they will get back there and get it done. So.
Yeah, that's true.
Certainly it's doable that way.
Why developers love that is, is it's a private project. Why tie their money up on something that will never be dedicated to the town?
Right.
So we've been doing that for 30 years with municipalities and developers love it and never complain. However, if they ask for a CO and something isn't finished, that's a site plan element, we have the right to say, no, you've got to bond it. You'll get the bond released in the spring when the weather gets better.
Is this just a policy in the other towns or is this actually part of their code?
I think it's more policy in most cases.
It's, the reference to the inspection fee is in the code, but the procedure is a adopted procedure of the building department and the planning board.
The advantage in fairness.
Is this something that we're asking them to adopt in the code or have we just asked them to clarify that this can be our policy?
I don't know that those things are helpful in codes because when you want to fine tune them, I really think it's better to have your performance security article say that the town board hereby, you know, authorize or announces that they have the authority to, by resolution, establish policies for financial security. That way they can change it by resolution. It's too cumbersome to have to change things along the way. The advantage of Mark's proposal, back to it for a moment, is what developers hate is when they have to bond the thing that they have to build. So now they have to build it and pay for it once. And then before they can build it, they got to bond it, which is to set aside the same amount of money. So in Mark's example, they don't have to bond those private improvements. The public ones we're going to still require. But if they haven't built it and it's a site plan element, before they get a CO, they're going to have to put up the money to make sure it gets done. But that's, they made that bed, not the code.
But that would be a policy though that we can add to the application.
I'm in favor.
As long as the town, but that's what the town board would really have to sign off on though.
Sure. It's like what we did with the fee schedule at the town board level. We made it, the fees would be set by resolution of the town board from time to time. Because once you put them in the code, then you got to do a local law to change it. And that means a public hearing and filing with the secretary of state and all kinds of formalities that aren't helpful.
But the actual fees would be referenced in the, as far as authorization would be in the code.
The authority for it, yeah.
So we've spoken to Brian, Mike and I had a meeting with him on these ideas, but I just want to share them with you. I think there's still room for some improvement.
Okay. All right.
I don't know if we discussed it in this forum, but wondering if we discussed restoration bonds. If a project was partially started and was left in an unsafe condition.
That's.
It's in the code.
It's in the code.
Okay.
Okay. And then the only other issue on the application was the entity's.
Disclosure form.
Disclosure. And did Brian get back to you?
Well, which aspect?
I think he did. On the aspect of when you have that publicly traded large single company, having the.
He went along with the recommendations I made to Walmart, but I think he recognizes that by the letter, that really doesn't satisfy it.
It doesn't. Not at all.
But, you know, so I think that's something they should attempt to fix. But he's not uncomfortable. I guess he's even comfortable with the recommendation that when it's a publicly traded corporation, it's enough that we get a list of, to make sure, you know, we don't have any of those people living in Monroe, the board of directors. And that's easy because it's in their annual report every year.
Right. Okay. So, and I'm sorry, did we add, did we add that issue to your letter? I can't remember.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the letter. I don't know.
Can you please just make a note of that? Yeah, I just want to, I mean, because really, the solution doesn't actually solve the letter of the law. So.
No.
And they should be aware of the issue, the town board meeting. And I'm not so sure Brian has made them aware. So. Okay. Anything else on this, guys? All right. So moving on to the wetland marker policy, let's do that while Mark is still here. And so I think we have in here the photos that Mary provided of the decals, right? And then.
Where'd that photo come from, Mary?
Over by Monbeja Park.
Looks like that wetland boundary, looks like it's in the middle of a pond, let alone the wetlands.
The beavers have made it bigger over there.
Needs to be reevaluated.
Yeah, I can just print it again.
Thanks. Yeah, so what happens? That just raises a good point. So where the beaver changes the circumstances of the location, what happens? I mean, do you move the, I mean, do you have them come back in to move the markers? I mean, what do you do?
I don't, I don't know that you get another bite at the apple once you've, once you've processed an application.
Yeah.
If they come back in for another application, then you can have them move it. But I don't think there's a lifetime obligation to move the markers to follow the beavers.
This is kind of ironic.
But one year doesn't make a wetlands anyway. It takes like probably 10 or more years before you finally hit hydro soils and vegetation and.
And that's one of the advantages of putting the markers at the outer edge of the buffer. It gives you that much more time before the actual wetland reaches the buffer.
They're going swimming if they're going to fix this one.
Yeah.
Okay. So on this issue, do I have something more than this document?
Well, I'm going to update, I'm going to update the text so that the wording matches what was discussed tonight and the sticker that Mary has provided that I now have a copy of. I'll coordinate with Mary to make sure we're on the same page. And then I think we'll have a text policy that you can adopt.
Okay.
My, I envision that the town is not going to have to lay the money out to buy these markers. I think it should be the same as when a developer dedicates a road and, or has an easement that they're going to put monuments in. They put the monuments in, they put it in per town standard. Their surveyor has to buy the monuments and put them in.
Wouldn't that be part of the policy?
Yeah.
Okay, you're going to add that.
But right now, there is a budget line for wetland markers.
Yeah.
So the planning board has it in its budget.
Maybe it's a reimbursement issue. We can handle it. I suppose they can either pay for it directly or they can reimburse us for the cost and buy them from us.
Yeah, it just, it looks as if the sticker itself has a, effectively a model number that's keyed into the town of Monroe. If you look on the bottom.
Oh, yeah.
So really all you'll have to do, once we create the standard sticker, tell them you've got to use sticker number whatever, and they're going to have to buy them. The only advantage to an applicant is if the town wants to lay the money out for 200 of them or whatever, they'll get a cheaper cost. But I don't know that, you might have better things to spend the money on. Let applicants put them in as needed.
The one other thing is right now, the applicant has to go into the highway department and they keep a log. So.
Right, so they know where they are.
Right. Possibly in this policy, maybe they still have to go to the highway department to say, we're putting these markers out there or at the planning board. You know, that could be discussed.
Yeah, I think the reason they go to the highway department is they borrow the tools from there. And then again, you've got the liability that if the tool doesn't work quite right and the person slices his arm open, well, there's a claim. So I think you're better off having, you know, the same as surveyors buy the tools to put the monuments in, let surveyors buy the tool to put the markers in. And the town will just administer what exactly you have to put in and maybe keep a log.
Is there any requirement to treat these like survey stakes so that somebody doesn't maliciously move them?
GPS, sorry, GPS coordinates recorded somewhere.
No, and that would have to be a local law with a penalty for disturbance. I don't know that we have anything in the code that makes it a criminal offense to touch one of these. That's really the only way you do it.
Yeah, you'd have to do that.
I like that.
But that's a town board action.
Do towns do this?
I don't know anybody that does wetland markers. So here ahead of the game is.
Who's the only one?
Yeah. I don't know anybody who may, who has, there might be something in the state law that makes it criminal to move a survey marker.
Right.
But I don't know anybody who has wetland markers, so I wouldn't have a reference.
No one has. Well, it'd be pretty easy to move it or not place it where it belongs.
Well, that's where we wanted to have the surveyors stake the limits.
Realistically, the likelihood of figuring out who did it, pretty slim.
Yeah, probably.
Blame the beaver.
Well, you could say the same thing for survey stakes and.
Yeah.
At least you have some recourse or at least some appearance of recourse.
Why is the environment less important than the property boundary?
So I can, we did have a section on enforcement. I can send, if that's your pleasure, a follow up suggesting that enforcement sanctions for moving wetland markers should be added to the code.
Moving or disturbing.
Disturbing. Well, just when they lay out the markers in the field, are they according to a approved plan?
Yeah, but I.
Are the markers, are the markers where they have to put them in?
I envision that when you approve the plan and the plan locates the boundary and the note outlines the requirement to place the bound, the markers at the boundary of the buffer, that a surveyor, the project surveyor would stake that out initially for the construction fence. And then that mark out would hold to put in the permanent markers.
And is there a prescription in terms of the distance between markers?
It's in the.
It's here in the, the suggested, it's in your packet.
I think I do need to add the requirement that the project surveyor, licensed surveyor, stake out those limits. But we'll, we'll work on that before the next meeting.
And would we say that they would be buying them from the town or buying them individually per town spec?
I think you're going to doubt the policy says they have to buy them, they have to have the tools, they have to put them in.
The only thing I think is if you buy them from the town, we control that the specs are met from the actual marker.
Or you may want to buy just the stickers. Let them buy the markers. That way you know the stickers are all uniform.
Yeah, you want the sticker to be white.
A brown, carbonite marker is a brown carbonite marker.
Right.
So maybe you want to get the stickers and buy a box of stickers so that you know they're all uniform.
Yeah. Who actually wears the decal and the markers? Sherny? Sherny? The town?
The last time I looked into it, nobody really remembered, because it's been so long since anybody had done it.
Charlie.
Probably Charlie.
So they probably have all the old ones still sitting there, and they were still using them.
I think in one of the earlier ones, I had pictures of the tools, and they had blue, no, they had white markers, white ones, excuse me, I keep wanting to say blue. And they had maybe one or two. So whoever's gonna be coming up for wetland markers, they're gonna be at trial, because I think they're gonna need to get all new carcinite markers, all new decals, a whole new procedure.
Do they have any markers left, do you know?
I think he only found one or two.
Oh, okay, so-
They might still be looking, but-
Probably use them on the road.
So it's a good opportunity to figure this out. And, and you were dealing with-
Bob Picanotti.
Who's that?
He works on the highway, he's the highway clerk.
Oh, okay. I've never had to deal with him. All right. Okay, so, so we have an opportunity here, since we're sort of, you know, they don't have any, to come up with this. All right, so good. Maybe we'll get it on the agenda for the workshop in September, and hopefully we'll make some progress. You'll submit something to us before then?
Yes.
Great. All right. Anything else on wetland markers? Okay. How about we take a five-minute break to go over the minutes that we've got in our packets, and Mark can leave. Mike probably can't.
Yeah, I can. You don't need me for that.
I don't know. Probably not.
I don't think you do.
All right, we're taking it, George. A motion to, okay, sorry. Tell me when, George.
Go.
All right, so I make a motion to come back from break. I'll second. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Good. Okay, so we are at the administrative section of our meeting, review of draft minutes on the agenda. We have the February 7th, March 7th, and May 9th. Let's take it from the oldest first, in the hopes of getting them done in that manner. The February 7th, the version, so my understanding is that your February 7th minutes, the February 7th minutes were actually passed by you guys at some meeting that I was not at, probably the June meeting that I was not at, subject to some changes I think that Rich wanted. Right, Noreen?
No, Rich had a change on the March.
Okay. So the problem that I had was that I had previously given you my revisions to the February 7th minutes, and, and I don't remember when I gave them to you guys, but I had, I redlined some of it with some changes, but I had never finished it, and I'd asked you guys to take a look at it, because I had serious concerns, 'cause I had found so many things wrong with them. So, so what you have before you is what I had given everyone, which I had redlined, and you'll see there are significant changes, but you'll see it stops on page three, and they're not numbered, the pages, because that's the amount of hours that I had. I had no more time left to keep going. And what you guys, I think, approved was their original form. So that means that my changes were never incorporated, and no one, everyone else thought the way she wrote it was fine, which concerns me. So I had asked that you guys maybe look at it again, at least the version that I gave you, and then look at the rest of it to make sure all is well. Like, for instance, if you go to, let's see, let's just number them quickly. One, number your pages, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so if you look on page six, you notice we have a sentence that just starts in the middle?
Yeah, and that was kinda my problem, because I tried to look at the videotape-
Yeah.
And it did not seem to belong to that meeting at all. But I thought we had said that this whole section needed to be redone at one of the other meetings.
Right. So, I don't know what to do with February 7th, because I'm not sure what you guys adopted. I'm not sure it was in great shape, whatever you adopted. And I know what you adopted didn't include any of my changes, so I know at the very least, the very, the first sections were awful. So I don't know what to do. I'm not really sure what to do here.
What I can do is go back to all the videos and make sure that whatever changes were given on top of these, go through them again, and then send out another version.
Yeah, because right now, I, I think we really need another version, because there was info that was missing on page six.
Right. I'm assuming, yeah, you picked up on some of this.
And then there were things on page six and seven that, I don't know where in the world they came from, but I don't think they came from that meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, I can go back and do that.
Yeah. I, I think you're gonna need to. Look, you, I sent you my redline-
That comes out blue to my friend.
-for these, so you've got them here. But obviously, a completely different version was reviewed by this board without me, and they asked for changes to be made as well. So we kinda gotta all come together, and then we know based on what Mary's saying, something went awry here, so- Okay.
I'll take care of that and get it back out to everybody as soon as possible.
Yeah, it's weird, like, like when you see page six-
Yeah.
We're discussing Malik Stern, and then all of a sudden it jumps into-
Glenwood, mikvah.
Right.
Well, yeah, it goes back to Isaac's discussion of what the master plan's gonna be.
Right, and that has to do with Glenwood, too, from-
Or the mikvah, I'm not sure which, but, yeah, it's just weird. Now, this could be, look, we know that, I, I've discussed this before, that sometimes when the videotape gets posted, it's in segments. And George has explained, you know, you know, due to the length of the video, you might have three different videos for one meeting. If they're not up there in order, or they're not labeled, you know, one, two, and three, or something like that, sometimes they're out of order. And so maybe when she prepared these, she did it from the videotape, Kate meaning, and maybe it got jumbled up.
Okay, I'll see what I can find in the computer as the original.
Well, look, you should have the audio in the computer system somewhere. Who knows if you ever find it?
Well, I did find a file that said audio the other day.
Right, good.
But they weren't labeled, so I have to go on and find out what each one is.
Yeah, that's a nightmare. You might be better off looking at the videotape.
Actually, this recorder, it is easy, because this picks up, me picking up a piece of paper.
I don't know if you know what I'm gonna say.
Okay, Anthony would like to say something, I'm gonna guess, but go ahead. First, say it.
Well, I think maybe some version control on this. I see that in the footer, we have the date of the minutes, which is good, but maybe also in the footer, we can put either a version number, or a version number and a date, or a version, so we know what the last one we reviewed was.
Well, that's the purpose of the footer. The footer, it's never, there's never more than one version per date, and so the point of the footer was to be that at all times, we put down which draft is, this is the February 23rd draft.
Well, right, so it would be, well, February, okay.
Of these minutes, yeah. And then if, if Mary had, if you guys had asked for revisions at a different meeting to this one, it would say-
It would go next to it.
It would get the next draft date.
Well, that's my point, but I'm corrected.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be page numbered as well, but it was-
I retract my comment.
Yeah, well, that was the purpose of it. The unfortunate part was, we had a lot of trouble getting it done. So we wanna continue with that. So the next version that Noreen makes should be the August version, and it would say that in the footer.
Right, okay.
Okay, so Noreen, you know what you gotta do.
Yep.
Sadly, we have not moved anywhere on February 7th. Okay, so let's go to March 7th, which we see is the draft 4-2, which was revised on 6-6, and then revised on 6:30. All right?
Uh huh.
Okay. Did everyone have a chance to review this? This is the one prepared actually by Barbara Singer, that I actually took a stab at revising, just 'cause I, I didn't really have the time, but I did it.
And then I did a couple of revisions after the one meeting.
Right, where we picked up on a couple of things, right?
Right. I have changed that, on the first page, that member Triano came in at 7:45. I changed it from regular to workshop, because it was a workshop, not a regular meeting. I put in ricaro for Anthony being at the meeting that day and voting on the first page.
Yeah.
Some of them are blue and some of them are red. I have no idea where my computer's printing this, right? It tells me it's a red line, and then it prints it blue.
Okay.
The one comment that member Triano wanted in there was when you were going into executive session to interview candidates, he wanted it noted that he didn't know anything about that until that evening, and he didn't think it should happen.
And he said that at that time, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I put, he, that was not in the original minutes that we're going over, so I had added that after the last revision. Again, I changed regular to workshop. There was a motion made.
Was all this redlined? Where, where is that change? Where he says that?
Right on the top of page two?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I edited it in red, and then there was a motion by Chairperson Schwartz to rescind the earlier appointment.
Yeah.
And it was seconded by Triano and not, I'm sorry, I can't say Gary's last name.
Abergani.
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 So I changed his name on that.
Okay. All right, so all of this is, every change was redlined, so we can see them all. The only thing I would say is that, you have to put it back, I disagree, absent member Triano should go back, that's what it should say. And where he came in at 7:45, that would go there. And that did not happen before I pointed out the fire exits. So it should, it should go in wherever, wherever he actually showed up.
It's on page two.
Yeah.
Which isn't in sequence.
That's where it goes.
Okay.
So it, takeout, came in at 7:45, put back in, absent member Triano. And then what it says is, member Triano arrived at 7:45 on page two, 'cause that's when he arrived. All right?
Uh huh.
All right. I don't have anything else.
I do.
Okay, what do you got?
I understand you have the motion and then the second, but there was-
Where is that?
On page one.
Yeah.
Okay. First paragraph, the second full sentence on the bottom there, aware at the meeting before the last town barred.
Where is it?
Oh, okay, I see that.
Okay. I know we had discussed this in the past.
I swore I had changed it on.
Yes. I, I know.
I know I changed it on a couple, that's weird.
Yeah, 'cause there are, there are a couple other things I know we, we discussed. All right, as far as that vote, where it says motion second.
V-A-O-D.
I think the vote should go after where it says Chairperson Schwartz, the majority wants to vote any other discussion. Then I think it should say aye and nay. I think that should be moved.
Okay, so that motion up there should go underneath where it says Chairperson Schwartz, the majority.
Wants the vote, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So that's page one.
Let me draw a line. Okay.
Page two, that first voting thing there, you don't have member McQuade. And I believe she voted aye to go into executive session.
Yes, she did, 'cause I watched it.
Right. And then, again, I think the vote was done after Rich arrived, so I think that whole thing with the ayes and the nays should go after he arrived.
Which one? To go into executive session?
Yeah.
Yeah, he arrived 7:45, then executive session, yeah, 'cause you can't say that he didn't want to think to go in if he wasn't here yet. I see that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll move that up.
Yep.
All right.
Excuse me.
Okay, that, about the middle of the page, motion was made by Chairperson Schwartz to rescind the earlier appointment. I think you should just say for Chairperson.
Uh huh, earlier appointment for Chair.
Yeah. Just to clarify it a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, nothing on page three. Page four. Near the top, it says Chairperson Schwartz, during executive session, we can't. Mike Donnelly made a comment right after that, so you should say, "Mike Donnelly, in a matter of fairness to that person, it is a matter of personnel, it should be done in executive session." Since he's our legal counsel, I think it's important that that sentence be included in there.
Can you say that again?
Okay.
Mike, Mr. Donnelly, and then what?
In a matter of fairness to that person.
Uh huh.
It is a matter of personnel.
Uh huh.
It should be done in executive session.
And that would go before member McQuade?
No, that goes right after you, Chairperson Schwartz.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
You want that again, Noreen? Did you get it?
Nope, I think I just drew my arrow in the wrong spot.
Okay. So after Chairperson Schwartz, during, during executive session, we can, right?
Uh huh, correct.
And then Mr. Donnelly, okay.
Okay. Then about in the middle of the page, it says Mr. Cusack. That's really John Atzel.
Where?
Middle of the page, mikvah yisroel amendment.
Right.
And then it says, Mr. Cusack. We have made some minor revisions to the plan.
Oh, you think that was Mr. Atzel that was saying it?
It was, it was John Atzel.
Okay.
Yeah. And the only thing I would add, same section right there, it's the last sentence, "It's been approved, comma, and it should be reapproved," 'cause that was a comment he made directly regarding the pump station.
It's been approved and what?
And it should be reapproved. Yeah. Let me know when you're ready for page five.
I got that one.
Go. Go ahead.
Okay, it's not Mr. Walter who says yes. That's near the top of the page.
Mm-hmm.
That's Mr. Cusack.
And probably Cusack distributed, well, who cares? Someone distributed, one of them did.
Uh, Isaac did, okay. And then the sentence right after that, Mr. Walter distributes the report to the members for the review with the narrative. The narrative was attached to that report.
Distributes the report with the narrative?
Yes.
Okay. Great.
Page six was fine. Page seven. Okay, and about the middle of the page, where it says Mr. Cusack.
Mm-hmm.
And about in the middle of that section, uh, it says ten feet of impact should have a comma. Or two feet of impact or not discernible.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I just think you need comma in there. Okay, going down towards the bottom of the page, again, it says Mr. Cusack. That's not uncommon.
In?
In this town, correct. Page eight was fine. Page nine. Um, just past the middle of the page, Mr. Cusack. Okay, the third line. And the aquifer yield varies between the bedrock. Not Bedford.
Uh-huh.
Bedrock. And. How do we spell aquifer?
It's aquifer.
Aqua, okay.
I don't know, actually.
AC.
ACQ?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's gonna have to be a spell check.
You do a global spell check on that. I always feel like it's A-C-Q-U-I-F.
I, that's what I think, there's an I in there somewhere.
It's I-F-E-R, yeah, look that up.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Uh, page ten. Near the bottom of the page, where it says Mr. Cusack.
Mm-hmm.
No, it's actually statewide statistics.
Ace, oh, okay, or a statewide statistic. Statewide statistics?
Statewide statistic, period. The stations are. Uh, because Ward had asked specific locations, and, um, he was giving the exact location of the stations.
Okay, so I'm sorry, you wanna say, no, it's actually what?
No, it's actually statewide statistic, period. The stations are.
Oh, the sta, oh, so we're not adding an S?
Right.
The stations are.
One in Montgomery, Port Jervis, and West Point.
The stations.
Are. One in Montgomery, Port Jervis.
Do you wanna colon there? Stations are, colon, one in Montgomery, Port Jervis, and West Point? No?
I don't think he was speaking that way, but.
Okay.
Dramatically, it's probably correct. Okay, eleven was fine.
Mm-hmm.
Twelve. Uh, the second paragraph, Mr. Cusack. The second line, placement of the Mountainville. Not, it, it's not Mountwell, it's Mountainville.
It's Mountainville Well, isn't it?
Yep. Well, we're taking out the word mount and putting the word Mountainville in there.
Yeah.
Replacing it. Okay, the last line under Mr. Cusack. Uh, the L, E-L-L property?
Mm-hmm.
That's supposed to be the olivieri.
Oh.
O-L-I-V-E-R-I.
Okay.
Going down to Mr. Etzel on that page. One, two, three. Fourth line from that section, running between Mikva and over to the county. You have to add the word county, manhole cover.
The manhole.
Fourth line, and, and, from the bottom.
Oh.
Run, running between Mikva and over to the county manhole cover. Page thirteen. Near the top, Mr. Donnelly. Uh, last line, the Glenwood Two School. That's a typo there. Okay, fourteen's fine, fifteen is fine, sixteen. Now, I know we discussed this because it regards to Jay Beaumont.
Yeah.
It, his name is spelled B-E-A-U-M-O-N-T. And that's a couple of times on this page, so if you just kind of do a global search for that. I got one, two, three, four, four, four.
Can you spell his last name again?
B-E-A-U.
Yep.
M-O-N-T.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so I've got like five or six.
Okay.
And the other name that's here is Lee Burgess.
Yeah.
Okay, near the bottom of the page, it says Mr. Etzel. Every applicant that comes in has the approval of Orange County Department of Health. I don't know if you want to go much further than that. Lee Burgess, now Jay Beaumont, I just looked, is vice president, not president. I'm sure he would love the promotion, but. As long as Google is correct, so it's a vice president. And again, Lee Burgess is, uh, mentioned towards the bottom of that page. Uh, page seventeen, we have a couple of Lee Burgess's that have to be fixed.
Was it actually Jerome talking?
He was there that meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember him speaking. Sounds fine.
Yeah. Okay, um, a little bit above the middle of the page, it starts with Mr. Donnelly. I don't know if they have the expertise in the water issue. Okay, the middle of that, uh, paragraph there.
Which one? Oh, yeah, got it.
Okay, it's not a tot. It's two night.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, a little bit past the middle, it says, Mr. Etzel. David Church is very knowledgeable with a lot of the activities that have occurred. Processes that the county undertakes in reviewing the application and is on the waterside. Lee Burgess would be a help. Those two guys. And then it should be comma, Lee Burgess and Dave Church could be invited.
Okay, just spell processes correct. And put a period between Waterside and Lee Burgess.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what'd you, I didn't catch both of yours.
Waterside, the word says Waterside, Lee Burgess.
Right.
Period in between Waterside and Lee Burgess.
Got it.
And processes.
Mm-hmm.
Needs to be spelled correctly.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I didn't catch that one, that was good. Um, page eighteen. Excuse me. Discussion of draft minutes. Here we go, February seventh, January thirty-first, blah, blah, blah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you should include a line in there. Rich and Jerome did not review their assigned minutes. Lisa handed in her revisions to order at the meeting. Um, minutes. Then we should add something, that minutes were tabled till next planning board meeting. Min, minute approval tabled till next planning board meeting.
Did, uh, did it happen to say which, was Lisa's assigned minutes?
Oh, it did. I didn't write it down.
That can be helpful, but I think, I, because I remember at the next meeting when we decided to punt on all the other ones but for Lisa's, because we, we had her revisions.
We had hers, yeah. But that you can look up, that's in the third video, near the end.
Yeah.
Because there's four videos for this one.
Oh, I know, this one was long.
This one was very long, yeah. And, um.
All right, so I have Rich and Jerome didn't, did not review their assigned. Lisa handed her changes in, and what else did you say?
And the approval of the minutes was tabled.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Until the next planning board meeting.
Okay. All right. And I don't think, we don't need a signature line there. We're respectfully submitted. You can simply say minutes prepared by. By Barbara Singer, temporary recording secretary, how about that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. It's a lot of changes, but nothing all that substantive?
No.
Do we want to, like, approve them pending the changes? As amended?
I'll go along with that.
And then it would just be up to us to make sure that it actually gets done? Yeah?
So I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as revised?
Prove the March seventh minutes as, um, we have asked for, as revised tonight, yeah. And you're making that motion, I'm seconding it.
Aye.
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 Aye. Just gives me such a thrill. It really does, that we got done with one, okay. As amended, but it has to get done.
Mm-hmm.
That's the thing. So, Noreen, please put it on our joint calendar to make sure that that gets done. All right, so we're at nine thirty. I'm giving it another five minutes, and then we're out of here.
You have bills to sign.
Yeah, but that's, that's just me, not them.
Okay.
All right, so May ninth.
May ninth, I don't have a lot of.
Okay.
Corrections, additions, and.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Um. So on page four, at the very top, the second line. Chairperson Schwartz explained that part of the planning board's willingness to proceed with this project, given the circumstances, was that. See, you have to put in was. Was that they provide a master plan, or the applicant provide a master plan. So it should say, given the circumstance, it's given the circumstances was that they provide a master plan.
Okay.
And then. Hey, same page four, go down under Mountainville. Second paragraph to the last, where it says Chairperson Schwartz, we are only an interested agency.
Mm-hmm.
This is your conversion issue from first person to third person.
Right.
Should say Chairperson Schwartz noted, the planning board is only an interested agency. So you take out we are. Um, I guess we can leave in the what's our evidence to challenge it, that, again, it's a first person, but I can live with it. Um, so you guys know, so when she started, she was writing everything as like verbatim first person, but then going back and forth between like summary, third person. It was kinda crazy. So we tried to just make it all the third person, but some of it's sort of dragged over. Okay, page five, minutes. All right, and this was your cleanup of, of kind of a crazy section here. So January thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. I think what you're saying there is the January thirty-first minutes, but the February twenty-second draft? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so then we need to say that, January thirty-first minutes.
I believe that's what I meant. I don't think this is this notebook, I think it's my other, yeah, that's in my other notebook, because this one's later on.
And so maybe we should say, you say January thirty-first, two, twenty, two thousand seven minutes. Put a call, put a hyphen in then. And then it would say the twenty-two, and be consistent, use either, use slashes or spell out.
Okay.
Um, so the February twenty-second, two thousand seventeen draft, not minutes, right?
Mm-hmm.
The last version, once changes made approval to post. I think in your, in your shorthand, that means. The two twenty-two draft was the last version, and changes need to be made, and once they're made, then you can post them? You need to go back and look and see what your, what your shorthand meant.
I'll read this.
Because this is not English, that makes sense.
Watch again, okay.
But I think that's what we were getting, that we probably had some changes, and once those changes were made, you, they were approved. To be posted, I, do we make them? I don't even know, did we make a motion? I'm not sure. I don't know. Oh, yeah, Chairperson Schwartz motion to approve is amended. Okay. So, yeah, you need to look at that line.
I will.
And make it make sense. But then where it says Chairperson Schwartz motion to approve is amended. Um, Chairperson Schwartz made a motion.
Okay.
Period. To approve is amended, period. Member Bingham seconded, period. Motion granted, period. Right, and then aye, and then you can all that.
Okay.
The July twelfth, two thousand sixteen, I think minutes is what you're saying?
Yes, they were up on the website.
Were, not was, were up on the website with the wrong design attached. We need to get design two and repost them to the website. Okay, so it's July twelfth, two thousand seven minutes, were.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. October four, two thousand sixteen, minutes have not yet been posted. They've never been circulated after extension changes.
I still haven't found them.
Noreen is searching the office, okay.
I still haven't.
But they were emailed. I'm pretty sure.
With the changes?
I think so. I felt like.
Because you had me checking the drawer and the boxes.
Oh, because, Mary, you probably handed them in. Do you remember if you handed them to her or if you emailed them? Oh, we're screwed. There was that one big box of all the minutes that you, that we were all just sticking the minutes in, that's where they are.
All right, I'll go back in the. There's one box under my, under the shelf unit.
It was not under, it was on the shelf. We probably moved it to under the, on.
I thought it was under the desk when we moved it over to.
I have two under my desk, they're very good footrests right now.
Yeah, there's one box where every time we found minutes that she had just stuffed someplace, we put it in one box, just so we would know where to look.
I'll go back into that one.
That's where you're looking. March seven, let's make it consistent again, two thousand sixteen minutes.
No, seventeen.
So, I'm sorry, two thousand seven, really? I don't know that.
Oh, yes, seventeen minutes, yes.
And then, right, and then the hyphens are done by Barbara, add singer, after Barbara.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next line, Chairperson Schwartz made a motion to approve the March thirty, two thousand seventy, seventeen minutes, period. Member Evergany seconded, period. Motion passed. Okay. What's that?
I only need the first two, uh, Tuesdays of the month, I would be March thirty minutes.
We had a special meeting.
What was it?
We had a special meeting. That's fine. Okay. Chairperson Schwartz approved April fourth minutes with corrections. Member Evergany's second, maybe, okay, so Chairperson Schwartz made a motion to approve April fourth. Member Evergany's second, period.
Yep, I put it in.
Okay. Brief discussion regarding temporary chair, period. Got that, brief discussion regarding temporary chair, period.
Mm-hmm.
Capitalize will. Okay. So.
Mary, do you have any comments?
Yeah.
Go, yeah.
Page one. Um, one, two, three, four, five. Five lines up from the ba-do, bottom, excuse me. Issues arise, Mr. Maldonado. I think you should say building inspector. Because it almost sounds like, you know, he as a person is gonna do some enforcement, but you need the words building inspector in there.
So the comma, building inspector, comma, that's there.
Right. Um, I guess this is a, a style. Open discussion regarding the walls, uh, it's on page two. It happens twice, I don't know if you want to use that, or discussion ensued, or if you, if you're happy with open discussion regarding the walls.
How about the planning board discussed the walls and climbing vines?
I, yeah, I think that might be a little bit better.
The planning board discussed the walls and climbing, the climbing vines. Okay.
And that's also near the bottom. Um, second from the bottom, open discussion on the proper way to post.
How was, there was a discussion?
Yes, there was a discussion on the proper way.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, going back up to that first paragraph, uh, on page two. Uh, the second line, was on top of or in front of parapet? And the size of the batter, oh, that's okay, I.
Where were we?
I don't know.
It's okay, it doesn't matter, because batter is the, the correct term, I looked that up.
Yeah, we had to look that up.
Yeah.
I called the engineer.
Yeah, we called.
Yeah, it was like.
Because I didn't.
Okay, on page two, just jumping in, page two, look at your, um, in the middle of the page, June thirteen, two thousand seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, circle thirteen, and then also look at the bottom where you see June six. Something's going on with your word processor, figure that out. June thirteen, you got a, a comma, but then you got a weird funky like colon thingy in there, and.
Wow.
I have no idea what you're doing.
It's like a ampersand.
I don't know what that is. But it's in both places, and it shows up in other ones, too.
I will watch for it.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
Okay, um, going back to that, um, second, there was a open discussion on the proper way to post a notice for the public hearing. I think a sentence needs to be added, that the minutes needed to reflect. The village of Monroe, Harriman, village of Caris-Joel, and Woodbury would be included as interested agencies.
You mean the notice would have to be included?
No.
Why would the minutes?
No, there, you were talking about the public hearing.
Right.
And then it came up who was included is an involved agency or is an interested.
To receive the notice? I think so.
That might be the case.
Because it wouldn't be in the minutes, it would be, I was concerned, I was concerned that we get the notice to the right people.
Right. So I, the, the notice probably should have been worded in a way that, not, not the notice, but the, the notice itself was sent to those.
There was discussion on the proper way to post, to, to.
To post notice for the public hearing.
To post the notice for the public hearing, and.
That the villages.
And, yeah, go ahead.
And that the village of Monroe, village of Harriman, village of Caris-Joel, as well as Woodbury. Would be included as interested agencies.
Would receive it as interested agencies?
Okay, that would be better.
Would receive it as interested agencies. Okay.
Page three. That's one, two, third paragraph from the bottom. As to note number six. Okay, the second sentence there, and the requ, well, second line, excuse me, and the requirement. In, we're gonna add, in note number two.
Was not lifted.
Was not lifted.
Yeah.
And should be corrected. And then you have to add after corrected, to be consistent with the language of the ZBA decision.
Mm-hmm, good.
On that page, do you want to look at the next paragraph down and add sanitary before pump station? Any private sanitary pump station? Also, do you want to?
Private sanitary, okay, I found it.
Yep, go ahead.
Do you want to distinguish, I know it's contextual, but between CO, certificate of occupancy, and CO, carbon monoxide?
Where is it?
Well, on that page, on the middle of the, at the, at the middle paragraph, at the end, CO is for certificate of occupancy.
It should be C of L.
Right. And on the first page, uh, no, sorry. On the second page. wherever it says CO hot- That's carbon monoxide.
Let's just say carbon monoxide there.
There's two times in that paragraph and the next paragraph down.
Okay, good. Got that, Noreen?
Yep.
Good, so carbon monoxide says CO on page two in the two spots.
Yep.
And C-O on page three.
Three, right.
Okay, good.
And on page one, minor typo, but the, uh, the third paragraph up, OCDPW? Sorry.
Well, actually, no.
It is Orange County Department of Planning.
No, because, and it's not DP though, it's PD. Orange County Planning Department, no?
Not on their paperwork.
Okay. Okay, so that's what she meant there then, I had already asked her that.
Right, and I double-checked the pa- yeah, I double-checked the paperwork.
Okay, good.
Sorry then.
No, that's fine.
Mary, were you done or no?
Um, not quite.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry.
That's okay. Okay, the second, we're going back to page three. Okay, it would be the last line, "Plans are adequate for the public hearing." It should say, "Mark Etzel stated that the plans are adequate."
Mr. Etzel.
Mr. Etzel stated, right.
Okay.
Okay, and the sentence right before where we just made that correction. Uh, it starts, "Department, if a health hazard or if an emergency, the town code can go on and back charge." You have to say the property owner, 'cause you're not saying who you're gonna charge.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's the property owner.
Okay, got that.
Page four. Third line from the top. "Board's willingness to proceed with this project, given the circumstances, was."
Right, I have that in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I already did that one.
Okay, a little bit past the middle, says, "Member Bingham brought up that some of the projects before us."
The planning board.
It should say, "The planning board, yeah."
Yeah, that's a first person, third person.
Uh, "Indicate that there might be getting water from Caris-Joel at some point in the future." Period. Capital I. If the water is coming from the Mountainville wells and there is an environmental impact, why did we approve the project? Comma, but if it comes, not came, but comes from the New York City aqueduct, there might not be any environmental impact.
Okay.
All right. Uh, the next section there, "Mr. Donnelly explained if someone wants to challenge the negative declaration, there is a determination that there are no adverse environmental impacts of using that well. That forecloses unless someone wants to do something about that and then insert, 'Using that as an issue.'"
I think it would be about that, comma, "Using that as an issue."
Okay.
Right?
And then it says, um, next line down, Chairman- Chairperson Schwartz noted.
Uh-huh.
And that would be it, I think all the others were addressed by Audra.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve the May 9th minutes as revised?
I'll second.
Aye.
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 Yay.
Aye.
Okay. Just giddy with happiness. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Um, I need to go back to February 7th, the minutes. It says that planning board members absent. It doesn't list me. And then, while we were talking about how it gets confusing where there's-
Yeah.
It starts in the middle of the page on page six. There's a couple of, like, on page seven, in the middle of the page, it says, "Member McQuaid was absent." So I don't know-
Yeah.
Was I absent, was I there? And that's not the one time that it says, "Member McQuaid was absent." On page eight.
Wait, wait, hold on, you're going really fast.
Sorry.
So wait, February 7th, it says you're present. And then what?
It says she's absent.
Page seven.
Page seven, okay.
Which should be in number four, Goldberg, building 53.
Hold on, I don't even have page seven, I got a number six, seven. So then, page seven, it says what?
On the- and by-
"Member McKay was absent." Right, in Goldberg.
Right.
But we don't know if you were absent, maybe you left?
It doesn't say that, um-
Yeah, who knows?
In the- on the front page.
Good point.
And then on page eight, the fourth paragraph down. And the last sentence again, "Member McQuaid is absent."
Yeah.
Uh, the two more paragraphs down, the last sentence. Member McQuaid, so I'm not even sure-
Yeah.
Was I absent or was I not?
I don't know.
Or is this a merging of two different?
Yeah.
Well, that's one I'm gonna re-watch, so I will double-check that, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I- I think you were probably there at the February 7th.
I was at the February 7th.
But wherever there's Goldberg, and I'm assuming the other portion is Glenwood Two, uh, I think that's a totally different meeting.
Where it says, "Member McQuaid was absent," reading it, it doesn't- it doesn't sound familiar. So I don't think I was at the meeting that says I was absent. But it looks like-
It is very possible that when I revised it, I messed something up.
I'll go back to the original and see what's going on.
Yeah, all right.
Oh, we got two out of three.
Okay.